Good evening, everyone. We are on the record. Even up to the top? Yeah. Today is Wednesday, December 17th. We had a scheduled 6:00 PM start. My trusty telephone, which is my timepiece, and has displaced my watch, says it's 6:11 PM. And I know you've all paid lots of money for cute bell tones, but please silence your phones. Thank you very much. At 6:19, can we have a roll call? At 6:11, a roll call, council members? Councilperson Gudziewski?
Aye.
Ram Chao? Bajano? Yun?
Aye.
Osborne? Coleman?
Aye.
Rivera?
Aye.
Waterman?
Here.
Council President?
Here.
We have all nine members in attendance. Would everyone kindly rise to observe a moment of silence? We remember Police Officer Forrester, who was laid to rest on Saturday?
The 130 children in Pakistan.
We're going to do a resolution tonight, Your Honor. Some good news. A person who for 98 years walked up to the podium and addressed the City Council turned 101 years old yesterday, Jerome Lazarus. A little bit of good news in this moment of silence. Thank you very much for being standing for citizens of each land. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the honor of our citizens. One nation, united, God, individual liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. On behalf of the council, in accordance with the New Jersey Public Laws of 1975, Chapter 231, the Open Public Meetings Act, better known as the Sunshine Law, adequate notice of this meeting was provided by mail to the Jersey City Reporter, the Jersey Journal. Additionally, the annual notice was posted on the Bolton Board of the First floor of City Hall and filed in the office of the city clerk. On Wednesday, November 27th, 2013, indicating the schedule of meetings and caucuses of the Jersey City Municipal Council for the calendar year 2014. In addition, at the time of its preparation, the agenda of this meeting was similarly disseminated on Thursday, December 11, 2014, at 4:00 PM to the mayor, council, business administrator, the local newspapers, and posted on the World Wide Web. We are in full and total compliance. I think we set the level for compliance with the Sunshine Act in New Jersey.
Council President, I'd like to make a motion to move up to Resolution 10Z37.
All right, could we do one thing?
Yes.
I'd like to make this a compound motion to add Resolutions 10Z32 through 10Z39 to the agenda. What resolution are you looking to move?
Move 10Z37.
Okay. That's your motion, Councilman Yun, to add those items and to consider 10Z37 first?
Yes.
We'll give Councilwoman Osborne the second. On the motion, Councilperson Gudziewski?
Aye.
Ram Chao?
Aye.
Bajano? Yun?
Aye.
Osborne?
Aye.
Coleman?
Aye.
Rivera?
Aye.
Waterman?
Aye.
LaVara?
Aye.
We have a 9-0 vote to add those items and consider or defer to 10Z37. Councilwoman, would you like to read it?
Yes. Resolution of the Jersey City, City of Jersey City, Resolution commending the Eagle Scout Honor Boy Scout Troop 466. Do you want me to? Yeah, you're going to read, yeah.
Okay. No one needs to see me while I read this. A resolution commending the Eagle Scout Court of Honor Boy Scout Troop 466. Council as a whole approved and moved the adoption of the following resolution. Whereas the Boy Scout Troop 466 of the Jersey City Heights has been inactive unit for the past 70 years, and whereas its scoutmaster, Mr. Lewis Capeludi, has led the unit for the last 43 years and produced 33 Eagle Scouts in the last 42 years. Whereas in order to achieve Eagle status, a scout must earn 21 merit badges, serve in a troop leadership position, and plan and lead a community-based service project. Most boys take six to seven years to become Eagles, but only 3% of all scouts actually achieve that rank. Whereas our four newest Eagle Scouts are all Jersey City residents. And why don't you stand in line? Because we have, it's Louis, Roy, Anarup, and Carlos. So stand one behind the other, if you would. Whereas Louis Devon Lozada, a graduate of LaSalle Academy, renovated seven classrooms in his high school by laying down wood flooring in each room. Very good. Roy Vanna, a senior at St. Peter's Prep, renovated a garden in Paulus Hook through cleaning, painting, and landscaping work. Anarup Alberts, a senior at Dickinson High School, created a storage room for a food pantry at a church located on Journal Square. Carlos Ergulies, a freshman at Rutgers University and a graduate of County Prep High School, organized the cleanup of the reservoir located adjacent to Pershing Field in the Heights section. Whereas the newest Eagle Scouts are recognized for earning the highest awarded rank in scouting history for the relentless efforts and devotion to Boy Scout Troop 466 of the Boy Scouts of America. And whereas Eagle Scouts display the characteristics of leader and role model, representing the values of Boy Scout 466 and that of the Boy Scouts of America to the best of their ability. And whereas for more than 100 years, the Boy Scouts of America continues to provide educational programs for children and young adults in an effort to instill character, responsibility, fitness, and preparedness as they go on to become exemplary citizens of our communities. It is through the Boy Scouts of Troop 466 that the Boy Scouts of America serve as an inspiration to the young men here in Jersey City and beyond. Now therefore, it be resolved that the City Council of the City of Jersey City does hereby commend Eagle Scouts Louis Devon Lozada, Roy Vanna, Anarup Alberts, and Carlos Ergulies, and the success of Boy Scout Troop 466, and all of those who support the efforts of the Boy Scouts of America. Say something.
Oh, we should vote first.
Oh, we're going to vote for first, okay.
Robert, you can call for the vote.
I'm planning on it, sir.
Okay.
Today's, first day with my new hands. This is 10Z37. This is the Boy Scouts of America. The Eagles. Councilperson Gudziewski?
I'm one of the 97% that didn't make it to Eagle Scout. So congratulations, men. Great job, well done. And we need more people like you growing up into the community to help out. Thank you.
Councilperson Ram Chao?
Congratulations. Keep up the good work, young men. I vote aye.
Councilperson Bajano?
Congratulations. I was Troop 727 in Manhattan.
Councilperson Yun?
I voted aye. Congratulations. Keep the good work. Thank you.
Councilperson Osborne?
What a wonderful accomplishment. Really proud of you guys. I'm sure your parents are as well. I vote aye.
Councilperson Coleman?
I wasn't a member of any troop because I'm a female, but I appreciate what you guys do. You did a great job. Congratulations, and I vote aye.
Councilman Rivera?
Congratulations on everything you guys do. You guys are real great. I vote aye.
Councilperson Waterman?
Congratulations. I vote aye.
Council President?
Just congratulations to all you men for the great work. And congratulations to the scout leader as well for leading them in this direction and the path of leadership. So congratulations, I vote aye.
We have a 9-0 vote for the approval of the resolution. Would Mr. Capeludi like to say something on behalf of the group?
No, Mr. Capeludi, but I'll speak on behalf of the group.
Oh, I'm sorry, your name is?
Rich Peters.
Rich?
Yes, Rich Peters. I'm the assistant scoutmaster.
Lift that up, you're kind of tall, Rich.
Sure, no problem. My name is Rich Peters. I'm the assistant scoutmaster. I've been the assistant scoutmaster for the last 20 years under Lou Capeludi. Two of our Eagles can't be here tonight because they have college exams. So Devon Lozada and Carlos Ergulies are not here tonight, but will accept their citations on their behalf. I'd like to thank the entire City Council for having us down and recognizing the accomplishments of our boys and the entire extended community of Jersey City. We've been an active part of the community for the last 70 years. We operate out of Metz Charter School in the Heights, formerly St. Paula de Cross School. School I attended when I was a boy. And the diversity of our troop really reflects the diversity of Jersey City. We have kids from all ethnic groups, all economic classes, and the bond that they have. I have 40 active boys in the troop right now. The bond that they have is tremendous. And so many different branches of the city, whether it's recreation, whether it's Councilman Yun, whether it's the Reservoir Alliance, have reached out and really helped us, lending facilities, any type of support that they have. And we appreciate it, and we're very happy to be part of Jersey City, and we hope we can give back to some extent. But thank you again for having us here.
Thank you. And whereas the council leaves the chambers to get in pictures with the Boy Scouts. I'm just moderating this for... I can do this for you. Can I do the entire public? Looking that way? I have public with this. You can't do it that way.
Okay, Robert?
Yo.
Robert?
Robert? Okay, council members, we ready to roll? Yeah, no, they're ready for me to-
It's nice to see you here tonight. Bring the spirit to the council.
The spirit of Christmas past.
Council members?
Ex to the grin.
Council members, we have first reading ordinances. Be patient, it's going to take me 10 minutes to read them into the record. 3A is City Ordinance 14146, an ordinance reappropriating $214,285 proceeds of obligations not needed for their original purposes in order to provide for various capital improvements in and by the City of Jersey City in the County of Hudson, New Jersey. B is City Ordinance 14167, an ordinance authorizing the City of Jersey City to accept title and ownership of all real property and all personal property owned by the Jersey City Parking Authority, and to assume all leases executed by the Jersey City Parking Authority. 3C, City Ordinance 14168, an ordinance supplementing Chapter 332, Vehicles and Traffic, Article 3, Parking, Standing and Stopping of the Jersey City Code, amending Section 332-24. No parking certain hours designating 25 feet in front of 51 Sherman Place. There's no parking Monday through Friday except holidays, 7:00 AM to 10:00 AM, and 3:00 PM to 7:00 PM. 3D, City Ordinance 14169, an ordinance supplementing Chapter 332, Vehicles and Traffic, Article 3, Parking, Standing and Stopping in Article 9, Parking for the Disabled of the Jersey City Code, Designating a Reserve Parking Space at 194 Neptune Avenue, 28 Sherman Place, 140 Wegman Parkway, and amending the Reserve Parking Space at 58 Gray Street, 233 Wegman Parkway, 194 Neptune Avenue, and repeal the Reserve Parking Space at 138 Wegman Parkway. 3E, City Ordinance 14170, an ordinance supplementing Chapter 332, Vehicles and Traffic, Article 3, Parking, Standing and Stopping, Amending Section 332-27, Angle Parking of the Jersey City Code, Designating 30-degree angle parking on the north side of First Street, Marin Bolrod to Provost Street, Back-in Parking Only. 3F, City Ordinance 14171, An Ordinance of the Municipal Council of the City of Jersey City, Adopting Amendments to the Land Development Ordinance, Article 3, Procedures As It Pertains to Site Plan Review Thresholds. 3G, City Ordinance 14172, An Ordinance of the Municipal Council of the City of Jersey City, Adopting Amendments to the Land Development Ordinance, Supplementary Zoning As It Pertains to Height Exceptions for Rooftop Appertainances. 3H, City Ordinance 14173, Is an Ordinance of the Municipal Council of the City of Jersey City, Modifying Amendments to the Tidewater Basin Redevelopment Plan to Modify Mixed District Uses and Clarify Language. 3I, City Ordinance 14174, An Ordinance of the Municipal Council of the City of Jersey City, Adopting Amendments to the Ocean Bayview Redevelopment Plan to Bring Language Up to Date. 3J, City Ordinance 14175, Is an Ordinance Authorizing the Acquisition of Blocks, of Block 214 Lots 3 and 4 and Block 213 Lots 1 and 3 from 500 Manila Avenue LLC. 3K, is City Ordinance 14176, An Ordinance Authorizing the Imposition of a Deed Notice on Property Owned by the City of Jersey City Known as Mary Benson Park, Also Known as Block 10901, Lots 129 and 130. 3L, is City Ordinance 14177, It's an Ordinance Rescinding Ordinance 14151, Interminating the Five-Year Tax Agreement in Between the City of Jersey City and 129 Brunswick Avenue LLC To the Property Designated as Block 11009, Lot 10 on the City's Tax Map and More Commonly Known by the Street Address of 129 Brunswick Street. M, is City Ordinance 14178, An Ordinance Authorizing the City of Jersey City to Extend Its Sublease With Moishe's Self-Storage LLC For Storage Space at 10 Senate Place, Jersey City For Five Additional Months Retroactive to November 1, 2014. 3N, is City Ordinance 14179, It's an Ordinance Authorizing the Execution of a Developers Agreement and Deed of Easement with Journal Square One Urban Renewal LLC and Journal Squared J Condominium Association, Inc., Affecting a Portion of Magnolia Avenue. 3O, City Ordinance 14180, Is an Ordinance Authorizing the Execution of an Emergency Access Easement Agreement with Journal Square Associates LLC and the Port Authority of Trans-Hudson Corporation, Permitting Emergency Vehicles of the City of Jersey City to Travel Across the Property Owned by JSA and PATH. 3P, is City Ordinance 14181, An Ordinance Approving a Twenty-Year Tax Exemption for a Market Rate Rental Project to be Constructed by 234 Sedam Avenue Urban Renewal LLC, An Urban Renewal Entity Pursuant to the Long-Term Tax Exemption Law, New Jersey Statutes Annotated 40A-Collin-20-1 at SEC, Located at 218-240 Sedam Avenue, Jersey City. Council members, 10A, 3, excuse me, 3A through 3P. 3A through 3P. Councilperson Gudziewski?
Aye for introduction.
Councilperson Ram Chao?
For introduction.
Bajano?
Aye for introduction.
Yun?
Aye for introduction.
Osborne?
Aye.
Coleman?
Aye.
Rivera?
Aye for introduction.
Waterman? Council President?
Aye for introduction.
All the items have been unanimously introduced. 9-0. Clap happy. Okay. You thought that was easy. Here come about 15-second reading ordinances. From 4A through 4L, we've got a road to travel.
4A withdrawn?
Is it 4A withdrawn?
4A, I was about to say, council members, is not going to be, there will be no public hearing on this tonight. Mr. Business Administrator, will this be advertised for the first meeting in January?
It's not certain yet. Depends on local finance board.
So are we looking at the second meeting in?
Wait till local finance board finishes it, and then we'll decide when, which meeting.
Hello. Yes, this is a pending resolution submission to the local finance board. So there's no certainty it'll be the first meeting. Still can't hear?
There you go.
See, we still have issues we need to resolve with the state local finance board. So it's possible, but there's no guarantee it'll be on for the next meeting.
So I think Robert is looking for guidance on when to advertise this, so...
So as we communicate with local finance, Robert, we'll let you know if it's going to be on their agenda or not.
Okay. We'll need enough notice to advertise it in advance, so...
The next meeting is, what, January 15?
14th.
14th. So you need to know a week and a half before.
To get the ed in a paper, I probably need to know by the end of the year.
Gotcha.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Okay, so there'll be no action on 4A. City Ordinance 14155, It's an Ordinance Granting Renewal of Municipal Consent to Comcast of Jersey City LLC, Its Accessors Endure Signs to Construct, Connect, Operate, and Maintain a Cable Television System in the City of Jersey City, County of Hudson, State of New Jersey. This is a public hearing.
Robert?
Yes, sir.
Can I ask one thing? In like November, when I go around like a senior building, the major cities complain regarding for JC-TV1? Because a lot of hearing, senior user, hearing aid. So if JC-TV1 able to provide the captions, it will help a lot of people. They need plan to have, you know, JC-TV1 provide like a caption.
Close captioning at the bottom?
That's a complicated issue because of the franchise agreement and what they provide us. So we would have to look at that agreement and see if there's a way to get them to do that for us. But it's not something that's really in the making right now.
But I mean, the city can make a recommendation to them.
We could certainly make the request.
I mean, really, I got a lot of complaint when I go to senior building. That's their major concern is that a lot of people use the hearing aid, and actually, our audio system is not that great. So there are a lot of difficulties. So I think, you know, we should be something...
I will pass on that request for sure. And we should also improve our audio system. That too.
Mrs. Ballser?
Yes, hi, Yvonne Ballser. This is very important to me. Several years ago, former Mayor Healy appeared at a special meeting on this particular contract. And even he was not very pleased with the contract that was being proposed that you are now voting on. He asked for several things that I thought that was very valid. First of all, he wanted to keep Channel 1, which is our channel, to make sure it would not go back to Comcast. Well, this contract you have there does not guarantee we would keep Channel 1. He also asked that we would not share Channel 1 with the Board of Ed, and the Board of Ed should have its own channel. And I thought that was absolutely fabulous. Mayor, the present mayor, Philip, says we're going to be the best mid-sized city in the state of New Jersey. But as a mid-sized city, we have no studio in Jersey City. We used to have a studio in Jersey City when it was cable vision of Jersey City. We had a studio in which there was personnel there. They would go and videotape sporting events like the prep, or St. Anthony's, or some of the public schools. They were videotaping. They don't do that today. There is no personnel there to cover the games that is being shown on Channel 1. We lost that. If you want to have out your message, you can't go to the Wall and Community Boulevard because no one is there. You will have to leave Jersey City and travel to this studio place. I forgot where it's located. Now, how could the best mid-sized city not have a studio for the public? I do a lot of videotaping, and I have to bring, purchase my own camera, my own equipment, and to give Comcast a finished product. Other towns have a studio in which the public gets training, and in which even the council members are allowed to put out their message. As it is right now, there's 13 more years on this contract, and as far as I can see, Jersey City will lose. We should also have another public access channel. There is Channel 51 for the public like me, but that one is filled up. So if we want to make changes, we will have 13 more years to bring Comcast here and make changes. Yes, you might be getting more money, but you're not getting the services. You're not getting the services that the people of Jersey City demands. And I think it's really sad that in the years ago, my children, who are now adults, were able to watch shows on Channel 1. shows on Channel, then it was Channel 3, of the games of St. Anthony and all the other schools, and they would cheer them on. We don't have that now, and we're losing a lot. So my issue is, no, this contract does not support Jersey City. It does not even support your interests as a member of the public at all. We should have, we should keep Channel 1, and the Board of Ed should have their own channel, and we really should be concerned about having something for Jersey City. The brand is called Channel 1. Keep that. Don't give it back to Comcast. Thank you.
Public hearing on the ordinance.
Hi, Jason Byrd. I concur with my fellow communicator, Yvonne. I did some research, and when you talked to them about community access, it was like trying to throw, get water out of a dry well. I had no concept of public access, and that's key. Key why? Because that's part of our First Amendment right to communicate, to speak and address our government, and also for aspects of the community, re-making the community, and also making future journalists in that aspect. And it's very disheartening that you guys are accepting a half-assed situation, where we're not getting our real thing.
Are there better ways to describe it, Mr. Byrd?
Well, everyone has one, but it's only three letters, and every two to four years we elect them. That's all right, but we do. But I really need, this really needs to be tabled, gentlemen and ladies, because, do you want to get something, you want 100% of a whole or a whole of nothing? And really, folks, we need to have 100% of something, because you may be getting money, but what are we getting, the people? If we get less of something, we're all going to be burnt, and we really need to have that done fully. And I really want this to be done and tabled. Have that renegotiated. How, question, when is our contract up?
It expired already.
It expired. How long has, have the city been waiting on them to do the contract or us approve it? What's a considerable amount of time?
Over two years ago, you were here.
Started under Haley's administration.
Byrd, when we had public hearings, we had two separate public hearings about the proposed renewal of the franchise. There was a number, number of public meetings. We couldn't be at this point right now if we hadn't conducted all the public hearings, conducted all the required publications required by the law, and this has the approval of adoption by the New Jersey Board of Public Utilities who've already reviewed the ordinance.
Well, getting reviewed and being done and not getting what we need is another aspect. Again, we need it to be, we need 100% of their services. We don't need, we need their services to be 100%, and again, communications is key, gentlemen and ladies. You can adopt this, and remember, when the people's, if people have said no to anything that goes on in this, in this council, and the majority of people say no, and you go contrary to that, you're not voting on the will of the people, you're voting on the, for the will of the machine. And that, thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen.
Public hearing, Ms. Skanga.
Yeah, Mia Skanga. I went to one of those meetings that was over two years ago, and people brought up some really good points, like there are people who are snowbirds, and they go away for the winter, so they wanted to suspend their service, which right now would cost me $183 a month for all three. And so, but none of those comments have been incorporated in this ordinance. As a matter of fact, this ordinance is worse than what we were looking at two and a half years ago. First of all, there's really no mention of public access. We have a coordinator now that's like, I think he works 11 to 1, two days a week, and it's like 11 a.m. to 1 p.m. If you're working, it's impossible. You go to Kennedy Boulevard, it's a ghost town there. They have an office where they accept payments and return equipment, that's it. Like Yvonne said, we used to have a studio until Schumler became mayor, and then he got rid of that and collected more money and built himself a studio here at City Hall. The $200,000, we know for a fact, will go to the city. Public access has broken down equipment. One of the coordinators, who was a full-time guy, used to complain that the place really needed to be rewired. That was like over 10, 15 years ago. The quality is poor. There's a lot of people who can't afford to buy their own equipment, and it's a good way for people to learn and maybe possibly propel that into a career. Back up? Okay. Into a career. There are several of us, we just got so frustrated, we bought our own equipment. We couldn't manage those hours. And then I have some other issues too, when I read the letter that's attached, which, if it's not incorporated into the ordinance, I'm not sure if it's binding. So Channel 1 could be moved to Channel Number 77 to 88, or 96 to 99. You might as well say Channel 1 is dead. To move that far down in the dial, unless you're Turner Music, you know, Turner Classic Movies, where I say, okay, let me watch Turner Classic Movies, nobody's going to watch it. A lot of people watch Channel 1 because it's the first channel. It's the first channel, so they come across it. So you gave away the story, you buried Channel 1, which is not good for people. It's a big city, it's getting bigger, there's various forms of media, you want to get your story out there, get people involved, well, you just buried yourself, so Channel 1's effectively dead. And then I read further on in this letter from Charles Smith, Comcast agrees to continue to provide videotaping services of city council caucus meetings at its current practice until they make a payment. That's one, I don't want to read the whole paragraph. Two, it's the second side of the letter, two, the completion and activation by Comcast of the access channel return line from City Hall. Once they meet those two, that's it, they're not going to tape and broadcast the caucus meetings. Who's going to do it? Who's going to do it? I've watched a number of the council meetings, and all of a sudden, before the public speaking portion, it freezes, and I said, where's the rest of this? And Yvonne actually called Adobe or somebody to find out, maybe it was a software problem or whatever. So we know these things are going on, you know, in this administration. It didn't happen in other administrations, but this administration, where they start freezing it and you can't see the balance of the meeting. I can, I can bet that once Comcast stops filming the caucus meeting, it's over. So who's not going to do it? Because this is an administration that talks about being a reformer, but in my 31 years in Jersey City, it seems to be one of the more oppressive, you know, administrations. And that is not the era we're in. We're in the era of free information, sharing information. They should have the NUA meetings. I mean, that's a big chunk of people's budgets on TV. They don't have any of that. Other small towns and suburbia, it's amazing what they have. Like Yvonne said, we're the second largest city in the state, there is absolutely no studio facilities. Bayonne has their own facilities, Union City has their own facilities, Westfield has their own facilities, Montclair has their own facilities, they all have full-time public access. Now granted, a lot of them have cable vision, so cable vision, you know, they're all major publicly-held corporations, but I think they negotiated better than what the city does here. The city negotiates for themselves, try to stifle as much information. That $200,000, I can bet, none of it will go to public access, and then they'll get rid of the coordinator, who's only there four to six hours a day, but at least, you know, you can contact him, and he is good with email. But if he doesn't get his six hours and gets paid, then there won't be anybody to contact with email. And he also lets you drop off on off-hours, which is really terrific. But if he's gone, that's gone as well. So this is a really lousy contract. It was lousy two and a half years ago, and it's remarkable, this is even worse. So it really needs to be renegotiated. This is just, quite frankly, when I look at this, I say it's just another part of the Phillips administration, you know, try and repress as much as possible, he knows best, but you know what? Nobody's buying it. No one is buying it, and this is just another example of it. So I say vote no. Thank you very much.
Good evening, council. You know, talking about Comcast, you know, when Comcast came to Jersey City, the owner of Comcast was an African-American. He brought Comcast to Jersey City, and when he brought it, we had a studio at Snyder High School, that's where the studio was, at Snyder High School. We had a lot of people working there, in the community, and over the years, he kept it within very well, but as he got older and he sold the business, and after he sold the business, then the tables turned on it. Maybe we can reinvent the wheel and have a sit-down with Comcast, maybe they can bring it back to Snyder High School or Jersey City University, but we do need a studio, and it's good for the children of the City of Jersey City. So we lost a lot, and people had been fighting to get that studio back here and to set up a new contract, and maybe you can bring this to the table to them, that we need a studio back here, it helps our children, because the high school kids at Snyder and around the city, they went there to that studio. That studio was in Snyder High School for years. I don't know how long they shed it down, but I know a lot of young people got a lot out of it. Thank you, that's all I had to say.
First, happy holidays to all of you. And second of all, let's applaud at least the efforts of...
Identify yourself for those that don't know the famous Kabili Tyari.
Let's applaud the efforts of Bob Byrne and his team. Has not been easy negotiating with these people. These negotiations did not stop, but the people who've come before me have asked you to do something that Bob can't do or nobody else. At least you, the city council, put a stop and tell them that they've got to go back to the table with Bob and the others and come back with at least some real things that can benefit the community. What Ms. Webb said about the studio at, no, I won't even say studio, the training facility that was there at Snyder High School needs to come back. There's no reason Comcast cannot do that. What was raised earlier by one of the other speakers about some of the community services they used to provide in relationship to cameras and training for the community so that we could take, report our events, even the high school activities that used to be recorded. There was a, there was another show, a local show, that would invite leaders to come here, like this Boy Scout group. They would come, come to Comcast, they would be on television, and they would talk about the Boy Scouts. So, you know, those small things they can do, but Mr. Byrne and his team has done all they can, it's in your hands, so please, just, and I say for somebody who has also been around for a long time and knew what Comcast used to offer, even after Mr. McKinnon, you know, sold it and stuff, they can still do those small things. So again, God bless you, happy holidays, and let's again applaud Mr. Byrne and his team for at least getting it this far.
Public, this is a public hearing, anyone else? Samuel Gutierrez.
That's right. Comcast, I'd like to cancel my services.
We have a motion, by whom? Council President Lavaro, seconded by Councilperson Waterman. Close the public hearing, Councilperson Gudziewski. This is to close the public hearing. Councilman Bajano.
Aye.
Yun.
Aye.
Osborne.
Aye.
Coleman.
Aye.
Rivera.
Aye.
Waterman. Council President.
Aye.
We have an 8-0 vote to close the public hearing. For final adoption of City Ordinance 14-155.
Robert.
Yes.
There's a motion. Motion to table.
I check on.
I just want to say something. What everybody said tonight is true.
Let's, you can, you can say what you want when you vote.
Wait, we have a motion to table. City Ordinance 14-155. By Councilperson Waterman. Seconded by Councilman Yun to table 14-155, item 4B. After the close of the public hearing. On the motion, Councilperson Gudziewski.
Oh.
Ramchow.
Yep.
Bajano.
Aye.
Yun.
Aye.
Osborne.
Aye.
Coleman.
Before I vote, I was here for a couple of those meetings, and we had a lot more in the contract than we have now, and a request for updated equipment for the studio that existed already at that time was requested, and more manpower to make sure that more activities was shown on the, for the public, and none of that is in there, no new equipment or nothing. I don't know whether that's Comcast or not, but I vote aye that it should be tabled for us to...
Yeah, I would say there is money in there for some new equipment, but I think you guys are right, you know, if there are open questions, this is not urgent, then we should table it.
Okay. I vote aye to table it.
Councilman Rivera.
Aye to table.
Waterman.
Aye.
Council President Lavaro.
I'll just say, we've had a previous meeting on this, and I think probably more information than should have been presented at that first introduction, because I think not everyone's aware of what, or what, it wasn't presented exactly as to what sort of changes are. What I will say is, the contract expired May 14th, 2013. Myself, I was involved with those earlier discussions and earlier votes that came before the council then, and, you know, it's tough to be in a good negotiating place when your contract is expired and you're dealing with a monopoly. That's the truth. Like, you don't have a whole lot of leeway, you know, if you're looking to renegotiate a contract, you want to have like two years before, where you're looking at some options and have some, you know, somebody mentioned Bayonne and Cable Vision. Well, if we've been talking to Cable Vision, probably in 2011, because the cost of entry into market to build infrastructure and things like that, no one's ready to take that on for a city of our size and our capacity unless they know that they're going to see, definitely see a contract at the end of the whole process. So we're kind of caught in the middle here, and, but I think perhaps if we table this and get some additional information... this and get some additional information at the next meeting, folks will have a better understanding necessarily of why we're in the position we're in right now. I will vote aye as well, and join my colleagues on that.
All right, it's tabled eight-one. Councilperson Gudjuski?
Sorry, Robert, Councilperson Osborne?
Just, if, if we are going to be discussing this at the next meeting, it, one of the things, pieces of information that I think would be helpful to have is the number of eyeballs that we are, that are seen on a monthly basis, say, of Channel One, and then here, and then, and then on, and then on the proposed channel, so that we can have a comparison.
And also Jeremy? Jeremy?
Chairman?
Jeremy?
Administration? Yes. Can't you make sure that when they change the Jersey City, uh, Channel TV, uh, Channel One, when they change that, they should get approved by city council, not themselves? Nine days of notice to change, you know, brand, I mean, 20 years of Channel One, actually not fair to the people of Jersey City? And also, they give us $8,000 for internship program, audio/video, in 15 years, without increase, it's not fair to the, you know, internship program itself? So when you negotiate, I think you gotta make sure, look at the two items to protect the people of Jersey City. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll, I'll take your notes, and, and, you know, we'll see what we can do with it, and we'll go from there. I think it's great that, that we're having this discussion, and, and I think this is, this is going to be a healthy part of the process. But I think Councilman Lavaro's comments are, are well-stated.
Um, I would just like to add... Yeah, I would like to add that, can we also negotiate the amount of time of the contract? Because, you know, we get complacent when we know we have 50 years to do something. If we have a contract that, that we know is going to expire in a certain amount of time, if they don't produce and gives us just enough time to review someplace else, maybe they'll step up to the plate a little more, if they know that we have an option to, to not renew that contract in, say, five years, or something like that. So I, I would like to know if that's possible also.
Councilmembers, this, this contract, even though it's for 15 years, is retroactive to the expiration of the last contract, which expired in 19, in 2013. That was when we had come onto the scene Verizon's FiOS product. And Verizon is a substantial competitor with Comcast. In fact, because of their competition with Comcast, Comcast's fees to the city were doubled over the year 12, 2012 to 2013. So they are competing against a statewide entity that does not come before you for permission. They could opt out and go under the state's umbrella and not deal directly with the city at all. So they've been negotiating in good faith. Channel One on FiOS, I think is found on Channel 30, TV One is found on Channel 37, I think, on FiOS. So, Channel One is where all table televisions want their pay-per-view showing up. It's a default that shows up every time you turn on your TV, so that you buy something. So that's why it's a precious piece of real estate for them. But moving on...
That's what I, that's what I say, Vaughn. I agree with you with this one. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert.
Okay. 4C, city ordinance 156, is an ordinance of the municipal council of the city of Jersey City, adopting amendments to the land development ordinance, Article III, procedures as it return, as it pertains to the general development application. It's a public hearing on the ordinance.
Jason Burke for the record. What does this mean?
This is purely an ordinance to prescribe a application, a formal application that gets filled out by prospective developers at city planning. That's all it does.
Is there a fee for that planner to come in?
If a planner, if a person brings plans in to be reviewed, they pay a fee.
What would that fee be?
That has nothing to do with this.
Oh, all right. So there is a fee, whatever the schedule is, on, on that entity, the Department of Redevelopment, or?
It's already, the fees are already established and codified.
All right. Thank you very much.
Motion, second.
I heard Councilperson Coleman first. Who made the second to the motion?
I heard Councilman Ramchall the loudest, but it was probably more...
He was, I was going to say Councilperson Ramchall was loudest. Councilperson Gudjuski to close.
Aye.
Ramchall?
Aye.
Bajano?
Well, wake up.
Bajano?
Aye.
Young?
Aye.
Osborne?
Aye.
Coleman?
Aye.
Rivera?
Aye.
Waterman?
Aye.
Lavaro?
Aye.
We have a nine-zero vote to close the public hearing for final adoption of item 4C, 1400, ordinance 14-156. Councilperson Gudjuski?
Aye.
Ramchall?
Aye.
Bajano?
Wake up.
Aye.
Young?
Aye.
Osborne?
Aye.
Coleman?
Aye.
Rivera?
Aye.
Waterman?
Aye.
Lavaro?
Aye.
We have a nine-zero vote for the final adoption of city ordinance 14-156, item 4C. Onto item 4D. Item 4D is city ordinance 14-147, 157, an ordinance amending and supplementing Chapter 8351, executive orders of the Jersey City Code. This is regarding the salary of the Jersey City tax collector. Public hearing on the ordinance, anyone else wishing to be heard?
Jason Burke, for the record, so this is going to be a increase for a tax collector?
For increased responsibilities, for as long as the tax collector monitors the tax abatement program, there'll be a $10,000 stipend. Should he or she not perform those duties, that money is not paid as a stipend to the salary.
And the use of the executive orders?
Again, Mr. Burke, I've explained this to you a couple times, I'm going to write it down for you. Every time the council passes an ordinance that they're required to pass to set a salary, there is a corresponding executive order that is signed by the mayor.
And just for the, for the record...
I know, and you're going to talk about...
Well, we, we have a...
Talk about your program, but that's...
No, not, 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 they're talking about my program. I just was in Martian DC when the sheriffs actually outed the president on the amnesty program, which brings in five to 15 million people, that'll put a burden on everyone in this city. Executive orders are illegal since the, since it was made by Lincoln. That's for making a fact. Please speak to the... I'm just speaking, right, I'm speaking to the...
You come up and make that statement every meeting, Captain.
Yes, I will continue it until it gets into people's heads that the executive orders are illegal. Thank you.
Start at Washington. This is a public hearing on the ordinance, anyone else wishing to be heard?
Second.
Who's the first?
And it's Osborne.
Osborne Ramchall. To close the public hearing. Councilperson Gudjuski?
Aye.
Ramchall?
Aye.
Bajano?
Aye.
Young?
Aye.
Osborne?
Aye.
Coleman?
Aye.
Rivera?
Aye.
Waterman?
Aye.
Lavaro?
Aye.
We have a nine-zero vote for the close of the public hearing. For final adoption of this ordinance. Councilperson Gudjuski?
Aye.
Ramchall?
Aye.
Bajano?
Aye.
Young?
Aye.
Osborne?
Aye.
Coleman?
Aye.
Rivera?
Aye.
Waterman?
Aye.
Lavaro?
Aye.
We have a nine-zero vote for the final adoption. Item 4E, city ordinance 14-158. An ordinance amending and supplementing Chapter 8351, executive orders of the Jersey City Code. Affecting the titles of deputy city clerk, deputy tax assessor, and assistant municipal tax collector. This is an ordinance to raise the maximum salary to $95,000. This is a public hearing on the ordinance. Are there any members of the public wishing to be heard?
Jason Burke, uh, this is for the record, when was the last time you got a raise?
Jason, Jason?
Uh, '09?
'09? Well, that's, that's very good, and I like the fact that you guys are using the Consumer Price Index, that really gets things floating for you to get paid for the, for that.
Jason?
Yes?
In the spirit of Christmas, can you give us, can you do us a favor, a gift, and make sense when you get up there? Because we're lost. Please, in the spirit of Christmas, can you do that for us?
Well, I, you know, it's really funny, every time I get up here, you're always perplexed, every time I speak. And I think I'm trying to speak as simple as possible. Do I have to go down to first grade level?
Probably, that'll probably work with you.
Uh, no, for you. Thank you.
So public hearing on the ordinance?
Second.
Wait, who made the first?
Joyce Waterman.
Councilperson Waterman, seconded loudest by Councilman Ramchall.
Yeah, the loudest.
To close the public hearing, Councilperson Gudjuski. Ramchall?
Aye.
Bajano?
Aye.
Young?
Aye.
Osborne?
Aye.
Coleman?
Aye.
Rivera?
Aye.
Waterman?
Aye.
Lavaro?
Aye.
We have a nine-zero vote to close the public hearing for final adoption of city ordinance 14-158. Councilperson Gudjuski?
Aye.
Ramchall?
Aye.
Bajano?
Aye.
Young?
Aye.
Osborne?
Aye.
Coleman?
Aye.
Rivera?
Aye.
Waterman?
Aye.
Lavaro?
Aye.
We have a nine-zero vote for the adoption of city ordinance 14-158, item 4E on tonight's agenda. Thank you very much, council members. Item 4F. Is an ordinance amending and supplementing Chapter 53, personnel. Section 53-6, vacation and other compensation, and section 53-11, fixed salaries reinstating the Consumer Price Index, CPI. Mrs. Ballser, this would set this at 2.5% this year, there would be no increase for 2015, and the increase would then resume in the year 16, based on the index promulgated by the state of New Jersey called the Implicit Price Deflator.
And this is for what employees, the...
This is for all employees whose salaries are set by ordinance.
By ordinance, okay. I just want to, I...
And incidentally, the, this ordinance was rescinded, the last time it, there were salary increases for this class of people was 2008.
Okay. Just want to bring to your attention that Social Security gave an increase of 1.7%. The state of New Jersey gave to its regular employees 1%. And New Jersey pensioners who receive pensions got an increase of 0%. So keep that in mind when you start giving out tax, uh, increase.
Uh, giving out what? I, I could just share with you, Mrs. Ballser, I cried one year when the implicit price deflator was zero. I've cried when it was 1%. It's never gone up to the, uh, top, so it's...
Well, I'm just letting, putting that out as, as, in terms of, the people who are paying this could be a pensioner getting 0%.
Right.
Could be a state worker at 1%, or could be a Social Security pensioner at 1.7%.
Right.
I'm only bringing that balance to this ordinance. Thank you very much.
Okay, but average that over the seven years that this hasn't happened. So, thank you. Anyone else?
Motion.
We have a motion by Councilperson Coleman. No loud second by Councilman Ramchall?
No, it was Waterman.
Coleman and Waterman?
Girl, that's a shot, you know? You gotta be nice, it's Christmas.
Close the public hearing, Councilperson Gudjuski. Ramchall?
Aye.
Bajano?
Aye.
Young?
Aye.
Osborne?
Aye.
Coleman?
Aye.
Rivera?
Aye.
Waterman?
Aye.
Lavaro?
Aye.
We have a nine-zero vote to consider the final adoption of city ordinance 14-159. Councilperson Gudjuski?
Aye.
Ramchall?
Aye.
Bajano?
Aye.
Young?
Aye.
Osborne?
Aye.
Coleman?
Aye.
Rivera?
Aye.
Waterman?
Aye.
Lavaro?
Yeah, just to clarify for Vaughn, Vaughn, uh, this does not raise anyone's salary per se, it just increases the cap of their salary, is that correct? Up to $195,000?
No, 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 it, it will increase salaries for...
I thought they were above... Which one are we talking about right now?
This is the CPI ordinance.
F.
Oh, we're on F, okay.
We're on F.
I apologize, I was looking at 4E. I thought you was talking about 4E.
Okay.
Um, so let me just double-check, because I thought you was talking about 4E. Yes, this does increase salary, I'm sorry. And this is something that was discussed at budget hearings, it's been, it was discussed at the caucus meeting, the CPI increases have not been given to these, this class of employees for, how long has it been, Robert? 2008?
2008.
2008. So five years, and while costs of, insurance costs and everything else have gone up, they've been stagnant the whole time.
And the Christie healthcare tax?
I, I vote aye.
Thank you very much, Council President, thank you, council members. Adopted vote is nine-zero for city ordinance 14-159, item 4F. Item 4G, city ordinance 14-160, is an ordinance authorizing the termination of an existing deed notice and the imposition of a new deed notice on property owned by the city of Jersey City, known as 362 Summit Avenue, also known as Block 12301, Lot 2. This is a public hearing on the ordinance. Are there any members of the public wishing to be heard?
If this is the parking lot, the city is considering, um, having it developed, or not? Is it ordinance for this?
Yes, across from the municipal court.
Okay. That particular parking lot is used by people in the community in the evening, when the municipal court is not in service, they use it in the evening.
Right.
But more than important than that, when people attend school 11 for the border of their meeting, they cannot always park in this school parking lot, especially during bad weather. So people park in that. I mean, I understand the city saying we must develop. The problem is, you take parking lots, and you put buildings on it, and you say, well, people don't have cars. That's not true. The, the, the city is constantly taking land away, and it's not replacing the parking area. Now, I understand that you want to have parking behind the building, that's not going to be available for the people in the neighborhood, it's not going to be available for the people attending the border of their meetings and school 11. And the city has been forever, since going back to the Jerry McCann administration, been taking away parking lots, putting on buildings, and it's been, it's, it's hard for the people who do not have dedicated parking and have street parking. And now it's one win for that neighborhood, that they can park there in the evening. Putting a building there only creates a problem. I can't, besides taxes and water, the real issue in Jersey City, besides those issues, is parking. is parking. The idea of putting a building on a lot that is used as parking is wrong. The city should be going through into neighborhoods and creating parking lots. It's very difficult to live in this city because it's not the same infrastructure as Manhattan. You have buses, you have trains, you have everything in Manhattan. You do not. The buses, actually since the late nineties, people have come to this council meeting and have complained when bus lines disappeared. And they complained over and over again, they lost this bus line, they lost this bus line. There is no real man's transit in the city. And unfortunately, some people do rely upon a car. And you're taking away a parking lot, and you're not going to replace it for the community. And I know I will have a problem. I want to go to school eleven. My husband and I, we use that lot. But we're not the only one, because there is no other parking. And more than that, if you want to do something for Journal Square area, have you ever considered perhaps putting in open space? The area is already very congested. So, really, I'm not in favor in impacting neighbors. I know what it's like to worry about where you find parking in the evening, and that community will lose it. Yes, someone temporarily will have a job temporarily for that amount of time. But that community that lives here for a long period of time will be impacted, and we're not replacing it. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Ed Meehan, and I'm from one hundred Beacon Avenue in Jersey City, and I'm a lifelong resident of this city. I would like to address you on the issue of one thing, and that's parking. I'm a member, and actually the sergeant-at-arms, and soon to be just a member, of the local two forty-six. And as their representative on the scene, I have gathered petitions from the employees of the Jersey City Municipal Court. There are seventy-three signatures here. Almost every single person employed in the municipal court has signed these petitions. They are not here tonight because they're not allowed to be here tonight. Under the rules of AOC, the Administrative Office of the Courts, as interpreted by the Chief Judge Abad, they cannot attend city council meetings. So, these petitions are their presence. Now, these, parking must be provided for employees. It was, this was fought out over at Journal Square Plaza a few years ago. The city was brought to court under the previous administration, and they were, they had to provide the parking. And everywhere there is a public institution, the employees have parking. Now, our concern is that, parking. If this project goes through, the parking is going to be lost. It is up to the city. It is up to the city, then, to provide the parking. What provision has been made to do that? Because if none has been made, these petitions will be replaced by grievances of local two forty-six, and maybe even a court, another court case. So, these are the things to consider. Also, it's not just the employees, but BCI. They're not in the courts, but they are, they are in the building. They are involved. The city inspectors who come to court, the housing inspectors, the health inspectors, they have to have a place to park so they can come to court. Along with this, the people in the neighborhood. Now, while this is gone, can you imagine employees of the city, people wanting to pay their tickets, people coming to court, some of whom about to lose their licenses, and they are in this mad look for a simple parking place? The issue is one thing, parking. If it's provided in a timely fashion, you have no problem. But if it's not, beware. I want to present these petitions to the city clerk on your-
Not for the people. Eddie, who said that they can't come here and talk before the council? Is that a judge's decision?
Folks, probably in accordance with the strict laws of the AOC. As a member of that group, the only reason I'm allowed here is because I'm the outgoing sergeant-at-arms. Otherwise, I would not- I cannot be a candidate. I cannot sign a candidate's petition. I cannot belong to a Democratic club or Republican club.
That you can do. You can vote. You can sign petitions.
No, you can't.
Okay, that's not necessarily the debate that we need to have right now.
No, the, under the AOC rules, has been explained by people, by the staff. We cannot do those. And in fact, if we belong to a nonpartisan group that endorses candidates, we can only be members and not be, and not be officers. So, there are serious restrictions there.
Okay, thank you.
There are other copies, though.
If you could give us each a copy, that'd be great. If you give it to the city clerk, Mr. Meehan, he'll distribute it to the rest of the council. Okay.
Good evening once again, folks. My name is Jude Anthony Tiscornia.
Wait, 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 wait. Your name?
Jude Anthony Typhonated Tiscornia. T as in Thomas?
Find that at T-I-S-C-O-R-N-I-A.
Correct. Okay. I'm a homeowner, taxpayer, and small business owner all right here in Jersey City. I'm a local attorney. And I addressed this esteemed group last month, if you remember. It's a pleasure to be here with you again on the same issue. I'm also a public defender for the city of Jersey City, which is an independent contractor position. I have my own private law firm, and once or twice a week, as needed, I come in and handle cases for the indigent. The sale of this parking lot without any preparations or arrangements made to provide parking is extremely short-sighted and not in the best interest of the citizenry of this city. And I really, really, truly believe that. The lot provides parking for over a hundred prosecutors, public defenders, court employees, and from time to time, as noted by Mr. Meehan, police officers and city inspectors that are responding to subpoenas so that they could testify at trial on behalf of the state. So, the sale of the land would therefore hinder the speedy and fair administration of justice as guaranteed by our United States Constitution, because it would impede the ability of these aforementioned parties, police and so on, from getting to the courthouse in a timely manner and actually proceeding with trial. If you're scheduled for a trial at a certain time, and you're a city inspector, you have to come from the job site to the courthouse, park the car, testify on behalf of the state so that the city could win their case, and then go back out into the field. Same thing for a police officer. There's no parking on the street anywhere in that area now. I'm there almost every day as an attorney. I could only imagine that if you take, you throw another hundred automobiles on the street, it would cause even further chaos. Also, let's not ignore the eight-hundred-pound gorilla in the room. That is the contractual obligation the city has to provide parking for the court employees, those who are unionized, which Mr. Meehan represents, who, as he noted, cannot be here as determined by the Chief Judge, his interpretation of the union rules. To respond to Councilman Lavaro's assertion last time that, well, the contract expires at the end of the month, and from there on, the city is off the hook, that's simply not true. Legally, the city is obligated, and you learned this in your first year of contract class in law school, the city is obligated to abide by the terms of the existing contract until a new contract comes into effect. And to my knowledge, there's been no contract even negotiated. So, until that contract comes to fruition, the city has to provide parking, or else they'll be in violation of the employment contract. Now, I'm not a union member, but I just want to let you know, two cents worth of free legal advice, the city would have a problem if they actually sold this lot without making the proper provisions. So, one of the big issue I have with the ordinance is there's no provisions made.
And there is a provision for eighteen months of parking.
But that's obviously, that's eighteen months. And eighteen months and one day, then what happens? You know for a fact that union contracts can take years to negotiate. There's been no negotiations yet. There's cities with no contracts with police and teachers all over the country that have been in negotiation for years. I'm not saying that's going to be the case here. They very well may reach an agreement, but maybe not. And then what do you do in that case? And then what do you do if you have a contract where the union says, well, we refuse to release that provision? That's not part, that's not part of the bargaining. That's not a bargaining chip here. Then what do you do?
Well, since we'll vote on the contract, I can tell you I'm not going to vote for a provision that has a, has a contract that has a provision in it.
Right, but it has to come to a vote. And I mean, that could take, no one knows how long that would take, perceivably. I mean, realistically, no one knows. So, I'm just asking for more preparation. If you're going to sell a lot of land, eighteen months is great. It's very nice of the developer to offer that to us, but that's not definitive. Lastly, to address the people with signs in the back of the courtroom here, we need tax revenue. I absolutely agree. The city does need tax revenue. There's a lot of non-radables. But given the current administration's abatement policy, it's evident that more than likely this project will probably get a thirty-year tax abatement, in which case, tax revenue probably wouldn't, there wouldn't be no extreme beneficial tax revenue benefit to this project, excuse me, to address that concern. Next, with regard to parking lot equals expense. I don't really understand that. I asked the lady what she meant by that. She really didn't have an answer. She didn't know what to say. I don't see how they equal expense considering they cost almost nothing to maintain. It's not a building. There's no mortgage on the property, so it's essentially an asset held by the city that, if nothing else, balances the equity of the city. So, if you sell off a piece of land that the city owns free and clear, you're diminishing the equitable value that the city holds in its own land, which, again, short-sighted, and in my opinion, not a very good move strategically. And being a fiscal conservative, I wouldn't recommend it. Finally, an alternative, in my opinion, would be to simply take a portion of the proceeds from the sale of the parking deck, okay, and use that, from the sale of the parking lot, and use that to build a parking deck on the lot, located directly behind the municipal court, which is already owned by the city, which would then cure all ails. If you're going to sell this for a large portion of money-
That's been discussed as well.
Okay, but I think it should be contemplated in the ordinance so that one is contingent upon the other, so that all things will be resolved upon the passage of the ordinance. Oh, and, excuse me, on a final note, I too have signatures that I gathered on my own petition, except these are from local business owners and residents in the area. I gathered a couple dozen, being a father-
Just to add to your other thing about putting it in the ordinance, this is an ordinance for a deed notice and the imposition of a new deed notice on the property.
I understand.
There will be another ordinance that will actually convey the property to the Jersey City redevelopment agency.
I understand.
And it may not, it may be an appropriate place to place it more in there, where there may be an actual conveyance of the property to the potential buyer of the property so that we make sure that we, we allocate those funds appropriately to ensure that there's parking-
Yes, I agree, but I would like to set a precedent, because I've been following this issue very closely from the beginning, and I stand fervently by my position. I thank you all for your time and consideration in this matter. Have a Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Happy New Year. God bless you all.
Ladies and gentlemen, from the city of, for the gentleman of the city council, my name is Luis Mirabal. I've been a contractor in Jersey City for twenty-five-
Luis?
Luis Mirabal. M-I-R-A-B-A-L.
And where do you live?
Huh?
Where did you say?
I've been a contractor in Jersey City for the past twenty-five years.
Okay. M-I-R-A-B-E-L?
B-A-L.
B-A-
A-L.
B-A-L. Mirabal?
Mirabal.
Right, got it.
I've been, I've been a contractor in the city of Jersey City for the past twenty-five years. I come here to support this project, this development, for the property located on Summit Avenue and Academy Street. Development is important because helps local business and local economy. This also has effect in supporting property values and increase tax base for the city. Developers social as this development is good for the city and good for the people of Jersey City, especially in this much need in the quadrant near General Square. It creates jobs, additional taxes for the city, and it helps the whole area. Thank you.
Um, I speak Spanish, sir.
I'm going to translate.
What's his name?
Yeah. Jose Narvaias.
Jose Narvaias?
N-A-V-A-Y-A-S. Okay. En, Jose, Jose Narvaias.
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 I got it. N-A-V-A-R-E-S.
Yes.
EZ?
Narvaias.
Narvaias. Yeah. Um, yo resido en New Kirk Street.
He resides in New Kirk Street.
A mi me gusta el área. Es muy buena.
He loves the area. It's very nice.
Pero hay un conveniente. Eh, no me siento seguro porque-
He has a little inconvenience with the area. He doesn't feel secure.
Tiene esa parte en la que yo resido tiene muchos edificios que están ya viejos.
He feels that the area he's living has a lot of old buildings that are in bad shape and they need improvements.
Y me parece que están construyendo nuevos por otros lados, especialmente en downtown.
He feels that they are building new buildings in the area, especially downtown. And he feels that this area should have some new developments. It's general square's been bad shape for many years and it needs new improvements.
Por el lado por donde que yo resido, no, no lo están haciendo.
The area that he's, that he's residing in, there's, has been no improvements.
He visto muchos cambios en el centro de la ciudad.
He has seen many changes in the center of the city.
Y ha sido más seguro y placentero para caminar.
And much easier and safer to walk around than the area that he lives in.
Por favor, podemos hacer algo por mi área en la zona en la que yo resido.
Please, can you help me and the people in the area to, you know, to-
Alguien-
Make a safer and better place to live.
Alguien dijo que había planes para construir un edificio nuevo a la vuelta de la esquina cerca de la calle.
Somebody told him there was a new plan to build the building around the corner near the court.
Yo creo que eso es muy bueno para mis vecinos y yo.
This is good for his friends and people that live in the area and for him.
Espero que sea posible y hacer de mi área como downtown.
He hopes that this could happen, and this area will become like downtown.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Jason Berg, it's very important that this be tabled for another time. We are just finishing up a new construction in the area, and every time we have building, even they may be parking for the tenants, when people are coming to visit, there's going to be even less parking in that area. Now, you got to, you also have, our employees are going to have to worry about moving their car during the sweet cleaning area time. And much as it may be a sale to the city, the point is, is it going to be abated? And we, this council, who is majority, were for or against the abatements, and now it's like the little fairy of Dustland going around and giving everyone abatements. If there's going to be the construction of that tier in the back, we're looking at millions of dollars for something we don't even have to even really maintain. So, be smart. Either table it, reject it, money in your pocket is like sand. Eventually, falls out of it. And you really have to start thinking about your future. Our future. Remember, there's more abated properties, and there's less people paying for the full tax. And really, technically speaking, folks-
Okay, we're not discussing abatements right now.
No, but I'm, but I'm just saying-
Let's stay on the ordinance.
The ordinance is, get rid of it.
It's a deed notice.
It's a deed notice, but I'm really saying, but the, what is, after you have the deed notice, Mr. President, what's the objective of this ordinance? What is the objective?
The objective is to convey the property to a redel, redevelop, to a developer who intends to build residential development on the property.
And how many units are proposing that?
We didn't get to that yet.
Well, what is an actual height of Jersey City? I mean, you got a lot, you got a lot of things here. I'm just saying, don't sell, don't throw the baby out with, with the water, please. Use your common sense. Common sense is not common. Please.
water, please. Use your common sense. Common sense is not common. Please.
Apparently it's not.
Yes, I like this here a lot. Thank you, Mr. Clerk.
Jason, are you recording yourself?
Yes, I am.
Just watch Channel One and see yourself.
I don't need to see myself, I just wanna hear myself. I'm, I'm, I'm not that kind of person, I just like to hear myself. But I, actually, I am a news reporter and I am have my own show, so I'm just doing this. Thank you very much, God bless.
And envision what-
Tape of your greatest misses.
Uh, sir? Sir, welcome.
My name is Jerry Wade. I'm a Ward F resident, a local flooring contractor. I'm just here to say I'm supporting a project. I worked with the developer over here for over twenty years, Louise the G C, uh, worked with him for over twenty years. Uh, first time that I was able to access a contractor, actually work, was, uh, on Jude Avenue, uh, coming up, uh, you know, coming out the field. And, uh, they gave me opportunity to come and work, and so I'm saying I'm here to support that. Supporting construction is very important and have different phases. Uh, you have before, you have drilling, and after, and those are critical. Over the years, we have many developers come to Jersey, and, uh, we have people who have taken advantage of the local contractor. Working with Mr. Gupta, who I know personally, will make sure that, first of all, you're gonna get paid, you're gonna get paid on time, you don't have to worry about, uh, you know, not getting paid. Over the years, I've worked for many contractors and developers in Jersey City. The problem is not getting a contract, the problem is getting paid. So that's critical. To support that, we need jobs, we need opportunity to work, and that's critical. So I'm here tonight to say I support this project. We have a whole lot of parking lots, we don't need more parking lots, we need work and employment, and that, where people work, make sure they get paid, proper amount, and that's critical, and that's what I'm here to say tonight.
Could I have your name, name before you leave?
My name is Jerry Wade, Ward F resident, local flooring contractor.
Jermaine Wade?
Jerry, Jerry Wade.
Jeremy Wade.
Jerry Wade with a J?
Yeah.
Thank you, Jerry.
Sir, welcome.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the Council of Jersey City. My name is Neville Samaro.
Whoa, whoa.
And I live on Summit Avenue.
Okay, we need you to spell your name.
N-E-V-I-L-L-E.
N-E-V-
I-L-L-E.
Neville?
My last name is Samaro. S-A-M-A-R-O-O.
S-A-
M-A-R-O-O.
A-R-O-O, Samaro?
Yes.
Neville Samaro.
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I lived in Jersey City on Summit Avenue for past twenty-seven years. I'm a homeowner, also a resident, and I think the project will be, I support the project because it's gonna be income for homeowners, and it'll bring revenue to the city of Jersey City, and also it will be safe for our community because a parking lot there, a pasture there, almost every day, there's a lot of people hanging out over there, garbage on the street, so, uh, we don't need any more parking lot over there. Thank you.
Thank you. Phil, come on up.
My name is Phil Carrigan. I just have some questions or some concerns pertaining to this. I think the city is treading on strange waters. Unless the laws have changed, if you're gonna build a certain kind of building, or you're gonna build a bar or church, any structure that have X amount of people or participants, once in a time you are required to have X amount of parking spaces for your, uh, for the people that is going to frequent your place. If that law is still in place, then isn't it rather strange that you are now eliminating parking spaces and now you are adding more people, the less parking space? I'm not quite sure I understand exactly what is being done here. The question then becomes, if I'm gonna build a bar or church and I'm request, required to have X amount of parking space, then I can buy a vacant lot and turn it into a parking space or parking space four or five years, and then a speculator come around and offer to purchase that land from me for three or four times the amount of money. Now I can sell that vacant lot or that parking lot to a developer. So now, the request that I, the requirement that I previously had to have parking space is no longer in existence. So aren't you contradicting yourself, or only certain laws were designed for certain people? I'm not quite sure I'm understanding exactly what you're doing here. I'm not against development, neither am I against providing more jobs for people, but strange things are happening. And as a black person myself, whenever the developers come, black men don't get a, a good proportion of these jobs, so when we praise them in terms of jobs for minorities, so to speak, it doesn't always turn out that way, but that's neither here nor there. The important question here is parking. You have, you're, you're gonna have a densely populated situation. We are, people are, uh, complaining that going to court, and y'all are always sitting in the court all, anyway, so I'm quite sure I'm there quite frequently. So parking is important, but let's say you're gonna eliminate the parking, you're gonna add twenty, thirty, or forty more people and no parking slots? It is strange, isn't it? Rather strange. And you might want to consider then changing your laws when we are going to build a structure requiring or requesting these builders to have parking space. It is strange, rather strange.
Good evening. Donald Pepe from Skorincy Hollenbeck on behalf of the putative redeveloper. If this ordinance and a subsequent ordinance is passed, transferring the property to the J C R A. Standardly, comments that were made in reverse order, the project hasn't been designed yet, the building hasn't been designed yet, but it will be designed in accordance with the Jersey City Development Ordinance is applicable to this property, and all of the parking that is required for this building will be provided in the context of this building on this property. Heard a lot about parking, there are a lot of alternative solutions to continue to provide parking, if that's the city's determination with respect to the municipal employees. There's a large lot behind the municipal building that can be reconfigured, it can be reconfigured as a deck, it can be handled in many, many different ways, not to mention, there are literally dozens of parking lots available around the municipal building that are at, far under capacity. These are business owners who are, who would, you know, love the opportunity to provide parking for the city, and that brings me back to the, really, the key issue here. Right now, the property's not earning any tax dollars. Transfer this property to redevelopment authority, transfer it to a developer, build a nice building, enhance the neighborhood, you're gonna get, listen, it's guesswork at this point, but the guess is a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year in tax revenue. That'll more than amply provide for thirty-five parking spaces at a rate that's far in excess of what the market bears right now, which is a hundred and seventy dollars a space. You could get those thirty-five spaces indefinitely throughout time. Developers giving it to the city for eighteen months, free parking, they're gonna pay taxes on the property, free parking for eighteen months, developer's gonna maintain the property, do the snow plowing, there's not zero maintenance, there's snow plowing, there's insurance, there's risks, there's cleanup, eighteen months, and then indefinitely in the future, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. That's in today's dollars, two hundred, three hundred thousand dollars a year as we go down the road. So there will be a source of money that can offset the loss of the parking going forward, and that's the key here. Last thing I'll say, and I'll just leave it, the developer did also petition the local people in the area, Jersey City residents, we have three hundred signatures in favor of the project. Add it to the folks in the back, jobs, revenue, clean up the neighborhood, this, this is, this is a neighborhood full of boarding houses largely. This is a, gonna be a beautiful addition to this neighborhood and a beautiful project for the city.
Motion.
Wait, wait, wait.
A second.
Wait, wait, wait.
I think councilperson Waterman said motion, and then Coleman said second.
Give it to the girls.
There he goes, girls.
Bring them up, bring them up-
Yes, please.
To Scornia.
Yeah, please provide us, copy that.
Remember, let's not fold spindle or mutilate. Two, what did we have, two? All right, all right. Okay, is there anyone else wishing to be heard? All right, well, who made the motion?
Waterman and Coleman. We have a motion by councilperson Waterman, seconded by councilperson Coleman. To close the public hearing, councilperson Gudzuski.
Aye.
Ram Charl.
Aye.
Bajano. Yun.
Aye.
Osborne.
Aye.
Coleman.
Aye.
Rivera.
Aye.
Waterman.
Aye.
Lavaro.
Aye.
All right, you're close. Nine zero to close the public hearing.
Okay, the public hearing is closed nine zero for final adoption of city ordinance fourteen one hundred sixty. Councilperson Gudzuski.
You know, by now, everybody up here in council is well aware that we have to supply parking for everyone. We, we must have passed a dozen to twenty different resolutions where we had to pay for the different parking spots. So we know what the, the ruling is, and if we go forward and we have to supply parking, we're required to do it. I just think, by, this is simply the transfer of deed to, uh, to the redevelopment in, in an area which has suffered over the years from, from urban blight, and there's a lot of areas like that, including in my ward, so I'm hoping that these things move out, outward, and they, they go throughout the whole city where we can build buildings in areas where it becomes infectious and other buildings are built. So I definitely vote aye.
Councilperson Ram Charl.
I agree with my colleague, uh, this area need a development, it's nothing but debris and, um, people-
We need-
I agree with my colleague, this area do need development and it's not but debris and, uh, people hanging out there. Um, I personally went there myself, I drove there, I looked at the area, I actually spoke with, uh, councilperson Bajano. Um, I, I support this project, uh, I vote aye.
Councilperson Bajano.
All right, look, let's be honest. How do you build a courthouse? You have people coming, uh, from out of state, people from the city, you have all the workers in the building coming, and you have no place to park. I'm very familiar with the neighborhood, extremely familiar with the neighborhood. I think the development building would be a nice addition to the neighborhood, but the way the city has set this up, they should have either planned to have an addition build, and I have it on here about the lot back there, building a, maybe a two or three-story parking lot. I can't say yes and I can't say no, I'm going to abstain, but I think it's a shame what they're going to do to the people that work in the courthouse and to the people in the area when another hundred cars are dumped onto the streets.
Councilman Yun.
You know, as a councilman, when we hear the complaint from the, you know, people, so number one is crime, number two is parking, or depends on some area, parking is number one. It's related with the quality of life issue, people of Jersey City. If taking away, especially three sixty to Summit Avenue, their parking lot are not only served at their parking for the people walking the municipal court, it's also serve the public. It taking away parking space in Jersey City, I can say that is commit crime. If in the future, if you're gonna build a thirty-five space car parking lot in Journal Square area, that costs far more than one point one four million dollars will be. And that developer only provide eighteen months parking space for the people who walk municipal court. How about the rest of people, city inspector, who are law enforcement officer, who are people has some business to have to stop by municipal court? Totally outwaste idea what they have. Also, Summit Avenue is a very narrow street. Without parking space, that area, small businesses will be suffering. Where they gonna park to kind of shop in that area? It's a very bad idea. I saw progress in that area, but their purpose must be a smart progress. We must have created job, but that job have to be benefit to everybody. This is wrong attitude. You know, we talk about common sense, but without common sense, we try to make a decision. And this project, they would have built fifty-five to sixty-five units, market value rental units, without parking space. Where they gonna people park to car in that area? It's a wrong decision, and, uh, only they provide eighteen months, and then eighteen months later, what's gonna be happen? Be a smarter. Please, I strongly say no, not because of the project itself, but situation we have in Journal Square area. Please, I hope my colleagues to join with me, we should be, take away parking space from the Jersey City. Thank you very much.
Councilperson Osborne.
Common sense to me, the ten-year return on this is two point six million dollars, and even if the city needs to continue to have the obligation to provide parking for, uh, court employees, which is something that we have to factor in when we do a sensitivity analysis, it brings the profit over ten years to one point six. So we can still afford to pay for parking somewhere else than, rather than using an asset poorly as we are using asset poorly today. This to me is a very common sense, easy answer to say yes.
Councilperson Coleman.
I just can't imagine some of the statements that are being made here. I mean, we have people sleeping on the ground in Journal Square and on, on Academy Street. We have people that don't have places to live right now in Jersey City. So we're building housing, and that project is gonna provide the necessary parking spaces that the city requires to fulfill that commitment of that building. And in eighteen months, free parking, you mean to say that you're saying we can't figure out how to get parking in the back of the court building that has parking already in eighteen months? To me, the common sense thing to do is to bring on that project that's gonna bring safety in the area, that's gonna bring a beautiful housing in the area and provide parking behind the courthouse for the employees. It's a no-brainer to me. I don't understand the controversy here, but what I would say is, I've also received, uh, some, some comments from people that live in the community. It's not even in my ward, but they're sending to the councilwoman Coleman, I don't know why, and what I've been doing is forwarding them to, to the rest of the council, that we've received people in favor of this project that live in that community, and they wanna see housing, they wanna see the neighborhood built, so I don't understand. I vote aye.
Councilperson Rivera.
I vote aye.
Councilperson Waterman.
I vote aye.
Council president. So, I, I've, I've been supportive of this project from the outset, and, um, you know, the, the issue of parking, I get it, I hear the court employees and the, the members of the union there, and, um, we've talked about this in the council, that it's not just the court employees, but the, the idea that we provide, that we have an obligation as a city to provide parking for every city employee, uh, we're probably the only employer who does that, um, in, in the area, I would, I would guess. Uh, and so that cost is enormous to the city. Um, it's something that, uh, I think we need to, to change, but, um, you know, we're not, we're not selectively doing it for one class of employees or another, um, in that sense. Um, the, the last thing I'll just say is that, uh, here your concerns about the swift justice and things like that, and moving the, the process along there and providing adequate parking, I, I'm confident, very confident, that, uh- I'm confident, very confident, that solutions will be made to accommodate those concerns over time. It'll be eighteen months of parking being made available by the developer, from the date of conveyance of the property, as I would understand it, is that correct? Corporation counsel, legal? The eighteen months would of parking would actually commence upon acquisition of the property, which, it hasn't been conveyed yet, so. Yeah, it still has to be done, so it's at the latest another month, until we've got at least nineteen months to work something out and get this done, yeah. So I'm fairly confident that will, and then Councilperson Osborne really detailed the financial benefits. I vote aye.
Final recorded vote for city ordinance fourteen one hundred sixty, item four G, is seven one one, no vote cast by Councilman Yoon, abstention by Councilman Bajano. Four H, city ordinance fourteen one hundred sixty-one, should be very simple, it's an ordinance rescinding an ordinance fourteen one hundred twelve, and terminating the five-year tax agreement between the City of Jersey City and Jersey City MM LLC at the request of the owner. This is a public hearing on the ordinance, are there any members of the public wishing to be heard?
Motion.
Motion.
Who made the motion?
Osborne.
Motion by Councilperson Osborne, seconded by Councilperson Rivera to close the public Councilperson Gajewski.
Aye.
Ram Char.
Aye.
Bajano.
Aye.
Yoon.
Aye.
Osborne.
Aye.
Coleman.
Aye.
Rivera.
Aye.
Waterman.
Aye.
Lavarah.
Aye.
We have a nine zero vote to close the public hearing. For final adoption of city ordinance fourteen one hundred sixty-one, item four H, Councilperson Gajewski.
Aye.
Ram Char.
Aye.
Bajano.
Aye.
Yoon.
Aye.
Osborne.
Aye.
Coleman.
Aye.
Rivera.
Aye.
Waterman.
Aye.
Lavarah.
Aye.
We have a nine zero vote to close, excuse me, for the final adoption of city ordinance fourteen one hundred sixty-one, item four H. On to item four I. Four I is an ordinance of the City of Jersey City and the County of Hudson, New Jersey, approving an addendum to the two thousand and five amended and restated Water Services Franchise and Service Agreement between the City and the Jersey City Municipal Utilities Authority to revise Schedule C to increase the payment to the city. It's a public hearing on the ordinance. Mrs. Ballser.
Yes, Yvonne Ballser. I mentioned this story before, so, but I didn't tell everyone. In nineteen ninety-five, I had concrete poured into my basement, and the developer pulled up my basement floor and discovered I had a water leak. In nineteen ninety-five, with the water leak, my bill was five hundred dollars a year. When I sold my pro, and there was eight people in the building. I sold my property in two thousand and twelve, no water leaks, six people in the building and I, and I ate. And my water bill was two thousand dollars. What we're looking at is a backdoor tax. Now, last week, the City of Jersey City had a lien of the people that could not pay their water and tax bills. Water. Water is such, is a tax on homes. When we're saying we need affordable housing, excuse me, we need affordable government. It has been three point seventy-five percent increase since the days of Schumer. Every year, since he had this franchise agreement, it's been a standard three point seventy-five percent increase. Now, we just talked about having a two point five percent increase for people's wages, and I just told you the state just had a one percent increase for state employees, the county pensioners got zero, and Social Security is one point seven. We will have forever, every year, three point seventy-five percent. It is a tax increase. We're using water as taxes, and it's making people's homes unaffordable. And if you looked in the Jersey Journal article that came out, I think, last week, it is just pages and pages and pages of people, a lot in War F, who are behind in water and taxes. Now, if water was not so high, perhaps they could afford to live in Jersey City. But the problem is, you are allowing this mayor, as previous mayors, to use water as a backdoor tax. And unlike taxes, which you can deduct, depending upon your circumstances on your income tax, you cannot deduct water, because water is consumable product, like milk, so you can't deduct that unless you have a rental. So it is, it's a horrible thing to take water for year after year after year, so the mayor could say, oh, I cut taxes. But in meanwhile, between now until then, there is. And while we're overpaying for water, something that we really own, is we have all kind of infrastructure problems in the city. All over, you turn around, this area of the city is collapsing. So in between, it could go for two reasons. It can go back to taxpayers, so they can afford their homes, or it can go, perhaps, to fix some infrastructure problem. It does not belong in the mayor's budget, at all. He cannot turn around and give these, the reason why the city is not affordable, and I said this numerous times, every abating is not a ratable, and when the county strikes the budget, all those tax abating you vote on is invisible to the tax assessor, he does not include it in the budget. He only includes things that are ratables. So that's the reason why my taxes are high. We're less than hubbroken. Hubbroken being eleven billion dollars, well, we're six billion dollars ratable. So we have to make up the difference with higher taxes. And I think this is absolutely appalling, that any mayor would take this. You need water, what are you gonna do? Tell people they can only have maybe one child, because if they have five or six children, you couldn't afford the water bill? I mean, I know people may think that way, they may have a four-room apartment, but do they really want to rent to somebody with four or five children, because water is so high in Jersey City? They won't say that to their couple, oh, but that's the reason behind it. You're making the city unaffordable, and what I hear out of you all the time, need affordable housing, but you're making it unaffordable by transferring this money to the mayor. It has nothing to do with taxes, it's a consumable product that people need, they need the water services. And it's not as though we're buying from another county, we own the water. It is a, something that we got, the ordermen's got in the year like nineteen eleven or nineteen ten. We went up to upstate New Jersey and purchased that land that people up there have to buy from us. We own that property. And what are you doing, you're taxing us again. It's wrong, it's immoral, that people should lose their homes because water is becoming unaffordable. And I'm saying no. Thank you very much.
No sense.
Jason Berg. I concur, water should not be an item that is a fee, it's a right. It's nice to get money, but again, what the water department is doing to us, three, a third is on the administration, a third is on water dispensment, another third on the water itself, and again, if our rates are going up higher, how can we afford it? It's very important to see that money come into us, but again, working with a third party, United Water, when they break something in the ground, and they turn around, oh, it's not us, it's you, and I had that happen to me. They broke my sewer line, they're gonna give me three thousand dollars, called my insurance company, and they took it away. The real thing here is culpability. If we're looking for transparency, we have opaqueness, if we're looking for truth, we just have lies, and if you really want to have progress, you need to be transparent and really look at what you need to be doing, and be effective, and look at the future. It's nice to have money. How much money is gonna be coming to the people, Mr. Clerk? How much money supposed to be coming to the people? From this particular ordinance?
I will tell you in a little bit. Which one?
For the record.
I'll tell you in one second.
All right.
It's going to be, in this fiscal, in two thousand and fifteen, four million dollars more, and some twenty-eight million dollars between now and the year twenty twenty-seven.
And question is, how will that capital be used? Will it be lowering our taxes, or?
That's correct, remember, we have huge, huge constituents in Jersey City like Tropicana, who use inordinate amounts of money, and are on tax-abated properties, as Councilwoman Osborne so cogently pointed out a couple of meetings ago. These are rate payers. The city owns the property, as Mrs. Ballser had indicated, so it is a city asset. The monies that have been collected through the rates are going to be returned to the taxpayers of the city, the rate payers, those people in tax-abated buildings who aren't paying full taxes will be paying full water rates.
That's good.
Okay, so that's in a nutshell.
All right, thank you very much, I appreciate that, God bless.
Motion. Sorry, sorry. One more.
Nea Skanga. Last night I was coming from a fundraiser, and I got to Summit Avenue, Summit Avenue in Newark, you know, five corners there, and there were police there, and they were digging up the street, I don't know if there was a water main break, or sewer line break, or something, but every time I turn around, that's all I see are breaks. This money should be used to fix the infrastructure of the city. When I lived downtown, after a while, I got really scared between Hurricane Sandy, the revow, every time I turned around, it was a water main break, constantly downtown. In one span of two weeks, we had five water main breaks. The infrastructure is collapsing. If they keep taking mu, and then the MUA, of course, is spending a ton of money on follow-ups, you know, legal team, Dakota's and whatever, it's just like, this is just another form of additional taxation, because then the MUA is gonna have to raise the rates again, which for the one family homeowner is not tax deductible.
City is responsible for.
Paying for the infrastructure.
For borrowing, for the improvements, for the water infrastructure. This money may very well, in years, in the future, go toward the capital improvements for what is a very, very old water system.
It is a very old, I have a better idea. I think you should float an ordinance to get rid of the MUA, because really, most towns have gotten rid of the MUA. Schumer came up with that idea so he could bond and put the money into the budget, the city's budget, and then the state put a stop to that, all right? This is just another form of that. Get rid of the MUA, bring back the water department, which made money, and we had, like Yvonne said, we had lower rates, they used to pay like five hundred dollars for the whole year, not even, back then, and get rid of the MUA, get rid of all these autonomous, all these contracts that are totally unnecessary, it's just another form of giving out so that they can build up their war chest when they run for governor, and make the system more transparent, get rid of autonomous agencies, especially the MUA. And as for this, this is just gonna raise the rates for the homeowners, because.
If we abolish the MUA, that money would come back to the city anyway.
Right, exactly, but then, the mayor doesn't get the opportunity to say, well, I don't have anything to do with the MUA and the rates and all the people that they're hiring, it'll be more transparent. And that's what it's all about, because we don't even know a fraction of the deals that go on at the MUA, not a fraction of the deals that are going on.
I appreciate your comments, but, we're talking about the.
The transfer, the additional increase. I think it's a bad idea, it's just another hidden tax, and a way to siphon more money and raise the rates with you, and as Yvonne said, every year they go up three point seven five percent, and that's just really to pay off the bonding under Schumer. So now you're gonna have an incentive to have another increase to pay off the additional money that they need to send to the city. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to be heard?
Second.
Motion from Waterman, second from Coleman.
Councilwoman Waterman, I cannot hear you make that motion, I don't know why I don't hear your soft voice. Second by Councilperson Coleman, to close the public hearing, Councilperson Gajewski.
Aye.
Ram Char.
Aye.
Bajano. Yoon.
Aye.
Osborne.
Aye.
Coleman.
Aye.
Rivera.
Aye.
Waterman.
Aye.
Lavarah.
Aye.
We have a nine zero vote to close the public hearing for the final adoption of item four I, city ordinance fourteen one hundred sixty-two. Councilperson Gajewski.
Correct that the city owns the water system, and we know that the MUA is the entity that's entrusted in dealing with the water system and the sewage, and in turn, they pay the city a finance fee. It's listed here, I know everybody doesn't have it, but in Schedule C, it shows it goes all the way to twenty twenty-seven, and honestly, myself, I don't know how they figure out a long-term basis like this, I think a short term of maybe four or five years makes a lot more sense. But you can see that there's increases if we just go by the schedule and don't change it. For instance, there's a half a million, there's a five hundred thousand dollar increase scheduled by the old accounting, and then there's a three million dollar increase the following year. So it's like, your scheduling increases all along, it's not like this is something we just came up with. And on top of that, I don't know how you figure things out, because obviously, your customer base changes, and what you, and like Robert was saying, you get a lot of money coming in from different companies and all that, so how do you figure out what your finance fee is? So the fact that someone's looking to say, okay, the money is there, and the four million dollars is gonna come back to the people, it's coming back to the city that we're using it, and if we.
Who owned the system?
We own the system, it's our money, it's gonna benefit everybody who's a citizen in Jersey City. I vote aye.
Councilperson Ram Char.
I agree with my colleague again, I know the four million dollar, the money will go back to the city, to the resident of Jersey City in terms of stabilizing taxes. So with that, I vote aye as well.
Councilman Bajano.
No, 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 because twenty-eight thousand.
You only get one vote, sir, one vote.
Twenty-eight thousand houses in Jersey City, we're worried about Tropicana, I'm not worried about them, give the money back to the people, lower the bills, the water bills, and I think what somebody said, the MUA, like what they did to the Park Lot, they should do to the MUA.
Councilperson Yoon.
Well, Jersey City MUA has roughly forty-four million dollars two thousand and twelve, and then now close to have a sixty million dollars surplus. But meantime, two thousand and nine to two thousand and fifteen, they increased water and sewer rates almost to fifty-four percent. And two thousand and fifteen, they planned to raise water three point seven five, and the sewer also three point seven five. Where they come from the sixty million dollar surplus? Because people of Jersey City pay high rates of water and sewer, and so it's very simple. And meantime, City of Jersey City, water and sewer, their infrastructure over a hundred years old, so every time we look around, they have a main water lines broken down. So every time we look around, they have a main water lines broken down and sewer line. This is a good time to city of Jersey City have, time to improve our infrastructure for the future of Jersey City, not only future, and of today's. So I'd like to grab the money, but this is some kind of a bad-to-a-tax clear. And they got the money not for the people, government. I will try to make clear. And another one, even one of the councilpersons say that, I pre-observe what they say, what they say, you know, really?
Alright, Councilman.
Okay, yes. We trying to produce a budget that is close to neutral. In other words, simply they talk to a bad-to-a-tax. Another issue is that... What they say, city could, could use that the money from the MUA, increase franchise fee to offset revenue lose from the tax-abatement development. Then we should be not prove the tax-abatement. And when they increase water rate and the sewer rate, it's not only increase rate for the tax-abatement building, it rate increase all of the city people who use water. So this is, uh, you know, myself, take money is not a bad idea, but if you look at the future of Jersey City, it's a bad movement. So I vote no.
Thank you. Councilperson Osborne.
Uh, to me, this is another just real clear vote. There's winners and there's losers by this vote. There, sorry, there's winners and there's losers. So if, if you vote, if you vote, if we vote this down and there's a rebate to, to all water payers, then the big winners there are the big businesses. And if we vote to take this money, then the winner is the middle-class taxpayer that gets squeezed over and over and over again. This is so clear. For every dollar, if it was a water rebate, for every dollar that we gave back to the big business and to the abated tax building and to the traditional taxpayer, we'd have to go back and tax them, the traditional taxpayer, because it wouldn't be going to the abated buildings, four dollars. This is such a clear yes.
Oh, by the way. Thank you. Councilperson Coleman.
You said me?
Yes, Councilperson Coleman.
I say yes.
Councilperson Rivera. Councilperson Waterman.
This will increase the fees. I say yes.
And Council President Lava. Will they increase the fees?
I vote aye.
Council President votes aye. We have a seven-two vote.
Fees to us, yeah, yeah, yeah. Good, 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 yes. That's what, I know that.
Can't go to the government, it's not us.
Okay, folks, let's, the vote is concluded. I think the worst is behind us. Let's move on.
Okay, adopted, seven-two. Council members, Bajano and Yun voting no. City Ordinance fourteen one hundred sixty-two, item four aye. Okay, council members, on to item four J. City Ordinance fourteen one hundred sixty-three, an ordinance amending and supplementing chapters one hundred and sixty, fees and charges, section one, fee schedules established of the Jersey City Municipal Code, ice rink fees. This is a public hearing on the ordinance. Are there any members of the public wishing to be heard?
Motion.
Motion.
We have a motion first by Councilman Rivera. We'll give you the second. Council President Lava. To close the public hearing, Councilperson Gajewski. Ram Char.
Aye.
Bajano. Yun.
Aye.
Osborne.
Aye.
Rivera.
Aye.
Waterman. Council prez. We have an eight-zero vote to close the public hearing. We've closed the public hearing for the final adoption of City Ordinance fourteen one hundred Councilperson Gajewski. Ram Char.
Aye.
Bajano.
Aye.
Yun.
Aye.
Osborne. Coleman.
She stepped away.
Still out of the room? Rivera.
Aye.
Waterman.
Aye.
Lava.
Aye.
Right now, it's an eight-zero vote with Councilperson Coleman out of the room. On to item K. City Ordinance fourteen one hundred sixty-four, an ordinance adopting the list of respective street names recommended by the municipal council, Street Name Subcommittee. This is a public hearing on the ordinance. Are there any members of the public wishing to be heard?
Yes, Jason Berg, we need to hear it for the record. How was this going to be for the record to help us with the naming of our streets?
What do you mean, how it's gonna be?
How will it be helping the city?
There's a list of names based on categories, alright? They can select from the list and it's still open to add names if necessary. And there's a committee. Based on the committee decision, they will make a choice and it still has to come to the council for approval.
And when these name changes go in, will they completely change the street names? Like Jackson Avenue was changed to Martha and King Boulevard? Or John F. Kennedy was cha- uh, changed from Kennedy Boulevard? We had to go through the entire...
Have to be voted on just like any other.
So we're gonna be having, when these streets get named, we're gonna have, when these streets get renamed, will then be, the city will be putting up new signs for the city?
Some of them will. Say it again, cause he's...
The question is, when these streets are changed, or the...
Some.
Some, will they be...
No, they're, nothing is going to be changed. New streets are going to be given na- names that have been vetted by the Street Name Committee.
And these are brand-new streets?
Those would be brand-new streets.
That had nothing to do with the old streets?
That's correct.
Alright. Well, that way, at the, with the committee and doing that effectively, that would be great. And there's no, that, will be, will there be name changes of old streets?
No.
No.
Dedicated.
Some streets will be dedicated.
These are, these are dedicated for new city.
Between the old, as you're aware, and you drive around town, you'll see a sign at an intersection say, "Also known as Jasonberg Way."
Nah, that's okay. I'd like to have State and Place make the Estaburg Place.
I have nine, nine members of the council behind me, you'll make a deal if, uh...
I don't need deals, uh, I need to be transparent.
Nah, his, his street is a dead block.
I wanna spend Wednesday nights looking at your sign, we can, we'd be glad to help.
That's alright. I only use about two minutes of your time anyway. Thank you.
Thank you.
We're a circular street you can't get out of.
We have a motion, aye. Seconded by...
Me.
Thank you, Councilwoman Waterman. To close the public hearing, Councilperson Gajewski. Ram Char.
Aye.
Bajano. Yun.
Aye.
Osborne.
Aye.
Coleman.
She stepped away.
Wait.
Rivera.
Aye.
Waterman.
Aye.
Lava.
I'll, I'll just say, this has been an issue for the...
This is to close.
Very close. Aye. Thank you, sir.
Alright. For final adoption of City Ordinance fourteen one hundred sixty-four, item four K, Councilperson Gajewski.
Aye.
Ram Char.
Just, uh, said, it's been an ongoing discussion between us, the council, um, getting a committee in place. I wanna thank my colleague, Councilman, uh, Councilman Alar Joyce Waterman, who worked tirelessly in this ordinance, uh, great job, and I vote aye.
Thank you.
Councilman Bajano.
Aye.
Councilman Yun.
Aye.
Councilperson Osborne.
Um, I vote aye and thank you, Councilman Waterman, for putting some structure here.
Councilperson Coleman still out of the room. Councilperson Rivera.
Waterman. Aye.
Lava.
I heard that, Councilman Gajewski. I'm gonna add to, to the accolades for the councilperson. Even before this council, this has been a persistent issue, street naming, street dedications. Um, and it really takes persistence, like to, to stick with it, to really churn this out, this kind of ordinance and make it, make it happen. So I applaud you, Councilperson Waterman, it really does take dedication to do that. I vote aye.
Okay, the recap for item four K, City Ordinance fourteen one hundred sixty-four, with Councilwoman Coleman out of the room is eight-zero, will get her vote. Our last second reading ordinance tonight.
Aye.
Is item four L. City Ordinance fourteen one hundred sixty-five, an ordinance of the municipal council of the city of Jersey City adopting amendments to the Harsemus Cove Station redevelopment plan to alter the street grid, add open space and make minor design regulation changes. This is a public hearing on the subject ordinance. Are there any members of the public wishing to be heard?
Motion.
Second. I heard the second by councilperson, by the council president, there was about seven ties for first.
Motion.
Who?
Motion.
Am I giving it to?
Give it to Danny. Councilman Rivera.
Councilman Rivera. To close the public hearing, Councilperson Gajewski.
Aye.
Ram Char.
Aye.
Bajano.
Aye.
Yun.
Aye.
Osborne.
Aye.
Coleman.
She's still out.
Still out. We're gonna go check them on a little.
Councilperson Rivera.
Aye.
Waterman.
Aye.
Lava.
Aye.
We have an eight-zero vote for the close of the public hearing for the final adoption of City Ordinance fourteen one hundred sixty-five. Councilperson Gajewski.
Aye.
Ram Char.
Uh, just wanted to say, uh, I've been talking to, uh, the, um, Councilman Osborne with this project. I know, uh, it, it was amended to make a minor adjustment and create more open space. I think the Harsemus Cove project would be great for downtown. With that, I vote aye.
Uh, can I invite Ann Marie Buchi-Carter up here? Ann Marie? Mary Ann Buchi-Carter, sorry. I'm a little drain bramage tonight.
It's okay.
We passed out earlier this evening, maps for the council. And we're gonna append this to the, to the ordinance. This does not affect the ordinance in any way.
No, it clarifies a couple of, um...
It's just a clarification of the map.
A couple of labels on the map. It makes them more clear and more specific.
Wait, you need to project a little for...
It makes them more specific.
Okay.
It identif-
There's no, no, uh, nothing the council has to do.
No.
Okay, thank you.
And it was, it came as a request of community meetings with council.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much. Councilperson Gajewski, the final adoption. Ram Char.
Aye.
Bajano.
Aye. So everything I said went off the record?
No, no. Yun.
Aye.
Osborne.
President of the ladies.
I, I just wanna say, um, I'm, I think that this is, these are positive changes. I wanna thank, um, the developers for taking a little bit of extra time meeting with the community, um, and I'm looking forward to seeing this development. I vote aye.
Sorry, Councilperson.
Aye.
Thank you. Councilperson Coleman. You voted aye, Councilperson Coleman?
Yes.
Councilperson Rivera?
Aye.
Councilperson Waterman?
Aye.
Councilperson Lava?
I'll just add, uh, if, uh, Councilperson Col- uh, Osborne and the Wardy community's happy, then I'm happy. I vote aye.
Can I get that on the record? They have a hard time telling us the part.
Alright, we had a nine-zero vote for the final adoption of item four L. City Ordinance fourteen one hundred sixty-five. Councilperson Coleman, you were absent or out of the room, I should say, for item K, fourteen one hundred sixty-four. Would you like to add your vote?
Aye.
The final adopted vote for ordinance fourteen one hundred sixty-four is nine-zero. You were also out of the room for the final adopted vote for four J, City Ordinance fourteen one hundred sixty-three. That means the re- final recorded vote will be nine-zero for item four J, fourteen Alright, council members, we're to the list of speakers. 'Tis the season to be nice to the council. Jamie Vasquez. Jamie will make one exception for you. Happy holidays for Lisa Sondre Dadi.
Some of you, Jamie Vasquez, my name, some of you may recall, when I first came before you, that I said, that I may, I come back every once in a while and talk to you about the few, about the past of Jersey City and, um, uh, things that were done in the past. And I've been working on a book about the Vietnam War for the past couple of years. And I want to read to you an excerpt of one of those pages, and that was my intention. But it got sidetracked. During Veterans Week, I'm invited to speak to students in different schools. I was invited to speak at PS twenty-two school this year. There was five veterans. One of them was the mayor. Now, they took us to the front row and they started their program. And at one point, they made us all, the five of us, stand up and turn around and take the applause of the children. After the assembly was through, I went upstairs to the sixth grade and I spoke to sixth-grade students for about forty-five minutes. Then, in early December, must've been like the first or second of December, I received a call from the Bertune Center on, Community Port, on Martha King Drive, to speak to a group of seniors. I said, "Sure, I'll do that." But apparently, the mayor didn't appreciate being put with me on the same level in, on Veterans Day. So what he did was, he got the Bertune Center people to uninvite me. So they withdrew their, their invitation for me to speak to seniors. This is due to the mayor. Now what's wrong with this man? I've seen both sides of them. He is a Doctor Jekyll and Mr. Hyde. He's nice to some people and he's a jerk to others. He has been a jerk to me. I feel sorry. I voted for you guys. That was a mistake. I see the mayor's having an orchestra concert, Christmas concert at the lowies. The day that it came to vote whether to duck down the lowies or keep it alive, there was three hundred people here. The vote came to a tie, four to four. Four percent, four in favor of keeping the lows and four in favor of knocking it down. And I was the fifth vote. My fifth vote went to keep the lowies. I was, I was a persona non grata for a month in the mayor's office because the mayor wanted me to vote to knock it down. I wouldn't do that. And that lowies theater is there today because of my vote. And there was another one, the Jersey City Medical Center. That also- That also came to its high vote, and it was my vote that made the difference, to build a new medical center and to put it where it is. I'm sorry that the mayor is this kind of person that he is. I hope he runs for governor. We've had better hotshot than him in here, and we've all lost. In seventy-seven, Dr. Jordan, in, what was it, eighty-one, Mayor Smith, and two thousand and three, Mayor Shunder, and they all lost. So, I look forward to the mayor running for governor, because if I'm here or not, I'm coming back to volunteer, to work for whoever has the opportunity to beat him, because in my opinion, he is a jerk. Thank you very much.
I apologize, I, I should not have allowed that to continue. Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm sorry to the public and everyone.
Ed Mian was here and left. That was an appropriate thought. Sam Gutierrez. I'd ask anyone who's speaking to migrate up into the first couple of rows, that would help us tonight. Go ahead, Sam.
I, I want to talk about the budget for a minute, and we're hearing about numbers. I, I really feel that, that Jersey City is beginning to look like a, like a liability. We're building all these high rises, I don't got a problem with that, I really don't. But I have a problem that they build these high rises, and we don't have public housing for people who wants to afford to live here, public housing. And we need to build more. The more, the better. People that income with thirty-two thousand to a hundred thousand. But I really mean that, that Jersey City is, is becoming a liability. I, I don't know who's in charge of the budget, but I, I guess that sometimes the budget is never on time. It's, it's probably because the accountants that we have, or the attorneys, do not know anything about finance. And we need to find people who knows about finance, so that Jersey City, in the future, doesn't go under. On the, on the parking. I mean, we used to have parking. I mean, we knocked down a lot of buildings in my day, and it was all parking. Now, all of a sudden, we're building high rises. And the heck with the dead dog. And that dead dog is the residents of Jersey City. Can't happen. And I hope they hear me. I might be a bag of wind for a voter, because I voted all my life for the right thing. So, I want to just, to say, I want, I just want to pass the rest of my minutes to that a hundred and forty thousand diverse in Jersey City. I want to pass that to them. Maybe they have something to say, because those people vote too. So, I don't want to just, just come here and just, you know, just hear me out. But I'm, I'm, now I'm understanding that liability is a disadvantage to Jersey City and to the residents. So, just keep in mind that we need more affordable housing. And another thing, one more thing, I saw on the front page of the Jersey Journal about some homeless. Now, what gets to me is that a, a couple of years ago, I read about some homeless person who died on the front of the steps in the cold. This is what I'm talking about, liability. Somebody is not doing their job. And I want you to find who's that person is, we can get them out of here. Because that is unacceptable in Jersey City. And it was kind of forgotten, but I didn't forget. And when I saw that on the front page of the Jersey Journal, I mean, that really got my goat. So, what I'm saying is that, that the more you, you build more high rises, there's got to be some kind of a, a luxury tax, that you can build more affordable housing and possibly get more beds for the, for the homeless. So, I, I bid you farewell.
Thank you, Sam.
You're welcome.
LeVarah.
Where my council president?
Bathroom.
He left?
Bathroom.
Oh, I, I really wanted to address something to him.
No, tell me.
Okay. Because I really want to thank him and the Jersey City City Council, the mayor's office, excuse me, our law for the city, because one of my grandkids is not here tonight, my grandson, my nephew. Well, last week, my grandson had me come to twenty-two. He's a student there, and he's in a gifted in town. And I didn't know every day, he needed a shirt and tie, and they ran election there. I didn't know nothing till about the last day of it. But he was my son's coach. My son didn't run, but Christopher.
Gonzalez.
Christopher Gonzalez ran, then it was another young man and another, another young lady. But I'm saying this, you should have seen the enthusiasm of them kids. People can talk about Jersey City all they want, twenty-two schools in the heart of Jersey City, in the heart of what people call the hood, whatever, whatever name they want to have for, but down near, Dr. Ursula Edwards School. This young man here, and the other two, I don't know the other guy's name, it was Mohammed, not Mohammed, that was a young man. Brian Black, they did a terrific job. I never seen a bunch of kids from kindergarten to fifth grade, to the fifth grade in that school. They worked hard. My grandson got up six o'clock in the morning, Ma, wake me up. They were so, and the Jersey Journal was there. I don't know where they at tonight, I had seen nothing in the paper about it.
Right.
Huh?
That's right, I haven't even.
I ain't seen it in the paper, nothing. Stuff like that, for the badgering, people that's out here, or you guys, or whatever, something positive. At them young people, you had to see it. I was telling councilman Waterman and councilman Coleman, I'm, I never seen nothing like this. I'm sixty-six, I've been in Jersey City all my life, but for a public school to put on a performance and them kids, kindergarten, you should have heard, I sat next to, oh, who would they run for, for Christopher, and what's his little girl's name?
Mary.
America, and the other little boy. But you should have seen the chanting, you guys missed a beautiful, beautiful thing. But don't let people say our children in public school are not learning. They are learning, and they are getting, and, and you should get on the Jersey Journal, and I'm going to call them, I want to know why. I'm glad you made it back before my time is up, council president. I was just saying, what a good job you guys did, and it supported the children at twenty-two school, a school that's in the heart of the city, the inner city, and the kids, tell it, these, them children was magnitude about it. You had to be there to really feel what I'm trying to explain to you. I mean, I never seen a program so beautiful, the kids so much involved, and worked so hard. These kids, my grandson, Ma, I need a shirt and tie, I need a shirt and tie, and it was so beautiful. So, we got to get on the board and keep up doing stuff, and let people know, they are doing something for our children in this city. Now, thank you very much. And at that point, I would like you guys to support our kids, I'm trying to get about fifty to a hundred kids to go to the NACP, Martin Luther King Breakfast, the tables are three fifties, and I would like to take some, that many children there, for the same reason about that election. If we don't stop these young kids when they're young, black, black lives won't matter, Spanish lives won't matter, young white kids won't matter. So, we need to get these kids involved, and I would like if you guys could sponsor a table, or get that man up in the hub, that's building all that construction of it, tell him to sponsor a table for some kids. Please, I would like if somebody could get back and let me know if you can get a, a table for these kids, and I would get the children, and I would get them to the breakfast over at Mary. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Notes reporter.
Thank you, LeVarah.
To the president and the city council, council members, I am here about, I came here about the bus stop, to have the bus stop moved back to its original place, because where they got the bus stop now, is out on the little island like, and it's like, the street is here, and the parking lot is here, and the people cut through the parking lot, and you only got a little space to stand. And there are three buses that use that bus stop. It was never put back where it originally was. It's out of place.
What is the street, what is the street that?
It's, it's on Academy and Bergen Avenue, but it was not on that island in front of Seatown. It was never there. It was right there by in front of the day, where they opened up this daycare center. Now, the woman is saying that, oh, there should not be a bus stop in front of a daycare center, but the bus stop was there before the daycare center came there. So, the bus stop should stay as it was in the place. If you didn't want a bus stop in front of your daycare center, you shouldn't have put it there in the first place. And we want to move back there, it's dangerous, it really, because if the kids are standing there on that little island, they, a car is cutting through that parking lot, and the kid accidentally steps off, you know, playing around, you know, our kids play around, and they play around, and they accidentally steps off, that, and the car is coming through, trying to beat the light, and trying to, they have missed, this light is red, so they can cut through the parking lot and get the green light here. Then some child is going to get hurt in the head, and they need to go on to the funeral service, telling their parents how sorry you are, when you can do something about it now. It needs to be moved back to its original spot, not where it's at now. I mean, we voted for, I mean, she's not the only one that went out and voted, a lot of people have complained to you about it, a lot of them, and they tried, like, having a petition, they didn't have a petition to move that bus stop, so they shouldn't have a petition, or put it back into its original place. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Richmond, out of business. Councilman, you had a comment?
No, no, that's, uh, Councilman Bajana's word.
You've asked her ten times, it's supposed to be quick. Ivon, you're up.
Okay, Ivon Walser. I want to say that before the next council meeting, it would be a good idea if this council were to visit Comcast Studio on Kennedy Boulevard and see what an appalling shape it is in. Don't take my word for it, just go up there and visit it, and ask to see the, the equipment they have, the equipment they would give the public, they request equipment, ask for that. And then after you do that, you should go to a real studio and see what they have. One of the really nicest ones in Montclair, but there's others in Hudson County, and see what we're getting for our dollar. We're getting nothing. And see what the other towns cover. Do they cover sports? Most likely, they do. Before you sit down and negotiate with, um, Mr. Smith, because we're not getting what we should be getting. Also, make sure we keep Channel One, and as, as, as Healy asked, Commissioner Healy, separate Channel One from the Board of Ed. They should have their own station, the city should have its own station, we should not be sharing something. Now, in terms of, um, the MEA, I just want to say, I feel as though that I am now being taxed twice, because the reasoning that I receive from the council is that with tax evaded properties, um, we'll, we'll not get a deduction on this. So, if they're not going to get a deduction on this, and neither do I, then I'm being taxed twice. And what is really is happening is this, we now got an increase in taxes of almost a dollar. Um, four million dollars is equivalent to eighty cents on the tax rate, an approximate. So, that's what taxes went up. And I'm going to remind you that taxes did not go down, you're using water as a tax, and it's going to be that tax for I don't know how long. You're, you're, you're really robbing the public. I mean, I, I feel as though what you did was absolutely wrong. You're making housing unaffordable, and people, after people say we need affordable housing. How can we be affordable housing when you do things in government to make owning a home hard? This makes owning a home hard. This four, this four million dollars a year, which is eighty cents on the tax rate multiplied by a hundred thousand dollars. It's a lot of money. It was a lot of money, year after year, as it go up. It's going to be a lot of money in ten years, it's going to be a lot of money in five years. It's, it's a horrible tax that we should not have. And lastly, um, I want to say that the census, you should do a census on the cars, we have a shortage of parking lots. I have watched Mayor McCann get rid of parking lots, I have watched virtually every administration get rid of parking lots up until this one administration, and it is a negative impact on residents. And I can understand why Chico had that ordinance about parking. You know it, and I know it. You may rationalizing and saying that down the road, it's going to be, we don't need the parking flights. But people come in, and you impact their homes, when they come in, they kind of take their child to the doctor, or take their child to a sporting event, and when they come back home in the evening, there is no parking. And those are the stories that you don't hear. So, I suggest the city should do a census on cars. We have a census on people, a census on cars, and see what we have available. The idea that we're putting in more development without parking is saying you're not addressing the issue of the city, and that should be addressed. Parking, as Councilman Young said, is, besides taxes, is the most crucial, crucial problem in Jersey City, and to build any building without parking, to me, is horrible. You're impacting the quality of someone's life. I had a friend of mine, whose relative passed away, and their friends came back to the wake in Jersey City, and you know his family got booted?
A minute.
They got booted because there's no parking in the city over a funeral. We used to have parking spaces, and, and you're just totally ignoring it, giving it to redevelopment and to develop it, and the citizens are one who been hijacked. And I know from my friends who still live in Vanworth Park, are telling me of the flooding they have over parking spaces. It's a serious problem. And finally, I want to say this, City Hall, when I came here Monday, Christmas, the blue lights, it looks really spooky, I'm sorry. It looks like Halloween's going on. This is personal from my point of view, blue light, blue lights with the white background, it, it looks like you're going to a cemetery, for God's sakes. That's my point of view. Does not look like Christmas or the, or the season, or whatever. I, I just don't find it very tasteful, don't know who did that, but I hope they don't do it next year. It looks horrible.
Your time is up. Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas to the council, and to you, Mr. Burn.
R.L. Williams.
Christmas, Ivon, and I'm happy that you're with me on that parking ordinance, thank you.
R.L. Williams is not here, nor is Pat O'Amelia. Louis Murabau. I think he spoke earlier with his helper, Fred Heitner.
Hi. Oh.
Maria Figueroa. Andy Siegel.
Hi, Andy.
Andy.
Good evening, and happy holidays to all of you, council president, members of the council, my name is Andy Siegel, I'm president of the Liberty Humane Society. I'm here tonight to congratulate the city council and the Department of Health on helping me build a partnership with the city. I've been president for the last three years of Liberty Humane, and I'm proud to tell you that Liberty Humane Society is a stable organization with a good management team and excellent relations now with the city. This year, we've accomplished a great deal, we have, have a hundred percent adoptable rate for all healthy animals. Under our director, Flanethkin's leadership, we have done a lot of work on stemming the issues of spay and neutering for animals throughout the city, and I'm pleased to announce that with the city's partnership, we are going to start a spay and neuter clinic on a mobile RV, and go out into the wards and provide. a spay and neuter clinic on a mobile RV and go out into the wards and provide low-cost spay and neutering services starting next month. It will begin with 07305. It's our attempt to work with the city and the Animal Control Department, Paul and Stacy, to address the supply issue of too many unwanted animals. So we look forward to working with each of you to go out into each of your wards and provide services to help the citizens with animal welfare. And I appreciate all your support. I know our budget is being up for resolution tonight. And I again congratulate Stacy Flanagan, her department, and the city council for all their support. I appreciate working together with you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Stacy.
Jason Berg. Oh, I thought holidays came sooner. No.
All right. Gentlemen, Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Happy New Year, Happy Kwanzaa. And remember, if it wasn't for Hanukkah, we wouldn't be having Christmas nor Ramadan. I have many hats.
Let him have his five minutes.
Yes, many more. I'm in the Hydra. I have many hats I wear. I am the New Jersey State Coordinator for National Liberty Alliance. I'm the host of a show called Stone Soup on Shake and Wake Radio, Mondays and Fridays, 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. on the internet. I'm a journalist and media director for Pacific News Service. On November 10th, 2014, the National Liberty Alliance approved sending out a Rito Quo Quanto to all the justices of the federal court districts and the superior court justices to ask them why they are doing what they are doing illegally, where is their authority? And as a result of that signing out in December 7th, none of the justices or the superior court justices have sent anything, and they're now in bad behavior. Also, in that time, on November the 10th, the sheriff's department, no, the sheriffs, sent out a notice that they were upset with President Obama's amnesty program to the 5 million to 15 million illegals in this country. As a result of his using the executive order, he negated the immigration laws that he had no authority to do. All executive orders are illegal because they're outside his bounds. The president can only sign law. He cannot legislate it from his desk, but he thinks he can. We are in deep trouble, folks. I have for the record for the city clerk, Mr. Byrne, and the president of council, the Rito Quo Quanto for your record. And I want to put into the city's record that you received it. I also want to give out a true bill under the common law versus the issue of the murder, actually the homicide of Eric Gardner. And we sent that out to the New York State District Federal Court and along with another 112 different agencies. With that, the verdict was not done properly because the establishment was misinformed the executive of the grand jury. With that, that creates a problem because it's actually perverting it. Now, I'm also going to be giving to this council my handbook for National Liberty Alliance, so people like Mr. Rivera won't be so perplexed when I speak. I'll help you along with that. Plus, the county sheriff's constitutional officer and his responsibility. But now, folks, Jersey City is incorporated along with other municipalities. Our police force are corporate police that actually don't have any authority to arrest anyone through common, via the common law. Everyone here has signed and sworn out to the Constitution to uphold it against foreign domestic enemies. And when you don't vote for the people's will, you're actually a domestic enemy because you're not voting for the will of the people.
Forty-five seconds.
No, I have four minutes and 15. Four minutes and 15 that I have. Sorry, yes. And on that point, thank you very much there, Mr. Byrne. I appreciate that. It's very important that if we don't take care of your liberty today, you don't know where you stand. And if you don't give consent to the authorities, they have no authority to do anything. Power and authority comes from the people. Without the people, there is no reason for this council nor this government to be here. And therefore, we need to be all on the same team, the same establishment. Remember, liberty is not free, and we don't need any more wars. And by the way, folks, the president has nationalized federal troops, and which means that the sheriffs can tell them the go-to bases.
Your time is up, Jason.
Thank you so much. God bless you and have a great day.
Philip Carrington. Phil Carrington.
Robert, I just want to reassure the council that the order was placed that Council President Waterman asked for, for the clock, so as to make sure to maintain the time for our public speakers.
Thank you. Philip Carrington, you have to do this during your five minutes, then? We're going into overtime. Phil Carrington.
Overtime.
Phil Carrington, please step forward. Phil Carrington, please step forward. I'll start your time.
You shouldn't start it. Toastmasters, it's always when the person speaks the first word. Follow some, some quorum.
Sit down. Philip Carrington.
Yes, my name is Philip Carrington. Just all due respect to...
Four minutes and 40 seconds.
I think that's kind of unfair.
Pat back and enjoy the nonsense.
With all due respect. I have a question before the city council, and I've been here several times. And it seems as though the city council doesn't understand that the question that I'm posing is directly to them, or it is being looked upon as being going in other directions to other government agencies. Whenever an official, whether it be a police or director or enforcer for the building department, et cetera, they are here to enforce the laws that were made by the city council. And if they are giving constituents unfair summonses or hits, when they have not violated laws, your laws, there should be something in place, some punishment for them. And so my question before you, what laws you have in place when, in my case, a police officer, and this is not the first time it happened, give you summons unfairly when they know that you were not in the wrong? I say it because, as I said last week, Sergeant Crackle and his, I hope I called his name correctly, but he's from the South District, his whole unit act improperly. And I think that the whole unit act more like gangsters than enforcers of police officers. Because their behavior was not to prevent crime, they're more to provoke crime by giving me the tickets and behaving the way they did. Everyone can make a mistake. Everyone, as a human, can make a mistake. But when you have the time and took the time to look carefully and you chose not to see, then it cannot be a mistake. When someone is going to give you a summons for not having a license, the license was conspicuously displayed. He looked at the license, and this now is the sergeant that did this. He took it down and, as I said last time, took a picture of the license. And of course, he asked the police officer, Malahi, to give me a summons, saying I did not have it. That ticket was issued in September 10th. We went to court on November 24th. And they were trying to convince the court that the license was expired. I mean, it's not an error. This is a deliberate form of harassment, governmental harassment. And so I need each member of the city council, all of you, to give an answer to this. What laws do you have in place to prevent this? Now, if I do something wrong, there's always something in place when a black man do something wrong. But this is wrong. This is unfair persecution. And it's not the first time. And no one is answering. I wrote letters, I did everything that I was supposed to do, and did it in a timely fashion. No one respond. You can't keep on doing this. Are you saying, then, that this is all right? Now, let me give, I'm just going a little off, but for example, I read in the newspaper that Ryan Strode, from whatever department he's in, used some profanity. And that was an article in the papers. I'm saying at the same time, the police officer cussed me out. For no reason. There was not even a reason. If I was violating the law, just give me a ticket. If they say that they're going to impound a vehicle, just impound it. But I don't understand what this was all about and not one, yes, sir, not one person says anything, nothing, no one. I wrote a letter to Councilman Waterman, and she says, whatever I respond, I can't remember exactly. And as many people as I possibly can. No one says anything about this bad behavior. This is unfair. You can't keep doing this, which means I would have to go to the state or take federal litigation. That's not necessary. You need to have something in place to chastise these officers for doing this. This is criminal behavior.
Philip. No, no, no. He has another 20 seconds and then...
Then I'll answer him.
Robert, you just, all right. But anyway, this had come on the back, of course, everyone keep on saying we need to stay calm. Well, I was as calm as I possibly can. I have a lot to lose, so I don't fight like I used to. But the fact is, I did in fact stay calm, as calm as I was requested to do. Nothing was done. And the officer, I need you all to note this, Officer Hennessy was involved a couple years ago, shooting one of my workers on arm, and then he bragged about it on September 10th again. So he was there cussing me out.
Your time is well up.
He was there cussing me out, insulting me.
Time is up, Phil.
Yes, sir, yes, sir, with all due respect.
Thank you.
No, you only 30 more seconds for Jason Berg.
No. Okay. Now?
Philip.
Now, you went over.
You said you were going to send it, you're going to fax it to the office, the complaint.
And I did.
I did go there and the complaint wasn't there, but...
Well, I can't get it this time.
I did get it last Friday.
You did get it?
I did get it.
Let him finish speaking, Phil. Let him finish speaking.
You have a complaint with Internal Affairs. Internal Affairs does the investigation, not the city council. I can't comment on anything. If you put it in Internal Affairs' hands, they have to investigate it. So as soon as I know what the results of the investigation are, then I can speak to you about it. But I can't, it's in their hands now. I can't say anything. Nobody on the council can do anything until they investigate it. So I'll check to make sure that there's some, there's some sort of conclusion with the investigation. That's what I can do for you.
I disagree. I asked a specific question. If the council had anything in place to make sure that this does not happen?
No more, Phil.
Just a question.
No more.
You must answer the question.
No more.
The council must answer the question.
No more. David Williams? Not present. Kabili?
Happy holidays to everyone. I just wanted to briefly raise something I think is very important. And I'm very glad that I supported Mr. Kakalaski becoming the city's business administrator. And I know you're very glad that you did because he's doing a yeoman's job. I'm also glad of something else. I did not know this young man until he came to Jersey City, at least he was appointed. And he said at the Law Department, I'm not a lawyer, but I know after 17 years, 16 years being in the executive branch, I know there's a lot of problems that existed with lawsuits in the Law Department before he became head of the Corporation Council. I know whether it's the Police Department or the Fire Department, that a lot of our actions are dealing with sexual harassment, and it takes specialized lawyers to deal with cases like that. Some of our cases have some special criminal things attached to them. It takes specialized lawyers to do that. What I recommend that you do is make a comparative analysis between the cost of outside counsel in the 14 or 16 months that this young African-American has been in charge of the Law Department, compared to the last 10 years. And make an evaluation of cost effectiveness, as well as why the outside attorneys are being used, that is being used. I think Jeremy Farrell is doing a good job, at least what I know about administrative and management. But I think that comparative analysis will set everybody straight. The next thing I want to deal with is that, not so much for me personally, because I really don't care about the Jersey Journal, the New York Times, or anybody else attacking me. Because since I've been 18 years of age, I've even been up on FBI reports. So it's nothing new. Some of the people who receive those salaries, they receive them because the BA submitted recommendations to the mayor, the mayor signed off on them, called management increases that they rightly deserve. Some people like Stan Eastern, for instance, didn't receive anything. Some people like Alton O'Neil didn't receive anything. Those people that work in cultural affairs, every time you give something that manually is up at 6:00 a.m. in the morning or out long hours after the event is over, they didn't receive anything. Now, there are some hardworking people in this city. And if the Jersey Journal is going to tell the story, they should tell it right. There are some people in the past eight years, every year they have received an increase for something, including this year and include last year. Now, if the Jersey Journal is going to tell the story, they need to tell it straight. And then there are some people, like Bob Byrne was saying today, that because of certain things that are way beyond anybody's legal control, sometimes suffer because there is no kind of increase, even for cost of living. So I want you to think about those things, look at those things, and even address some of the stories that I read today online about some of those increases. $1 million, I think they said the total is. Well, let's talk about how long some people have gone with doubt and others who've not received anything. I'm very concerned about slanted newspaper stories, because I've been the victim of them for the past 40 years. But I'm also concerned because it misrepresents the hard work of good workers and puts people in the categories that they don't belong in. Do that analysis on the Law Department. Thank you. And again, happy holidays.
Thank you, Kabili.
Happy holiday to you too, Kabili.
Jude Tiscornia spoke on the ordinance earlier. Council members, that's the speaker's list. We have petitions and communications. Item 6A through 6Z11 on the Franklin Agenda. The petition by Edward Mean will be 6Z12. The petition by Jude Anthony Tiscornia will be 6Z13. The petition by Don Pepe will be 6Z14. Mr. Jason Berg gave us 6Z15, 6Z16. and Mr. Carrington gave us 6Z17. So we go all the way up to 6Z17. We have Officers Communications 8A, excuse me, 7A, Reports of Directors 8A through D. Where to the claims, Medicare Claims, Claims and Addendum Number One. Be aware that the Business Administrator has withdrawn from page 35 of the Claims, the payment of $65. Voucher B082652 has been withdrawn by the Business Administrator. That was for a registration for the League of Municipalities, which was verboten this year. So on Medicare Claims, Claims and Addendum Number One, Councilperson Gudjuski accepting that item withdrawn. Ram Chao?
Aye.
Bajano?
Aye.
Yun?
Aye.
Osborne?
Aye.
Coleman?
Aye.
Rivera?
Aye.
Waterman?
Aye.
Lavaro?
Aye.
All right, we'll get Councilperson Gudjuski when he gets back in the room. Couldn't be going long. Resolutions 10A, Councilmembers through 10L, first page of resolutions. Councilperson Ram Chao?
Aye.
Bajano?
Aye.
Yun?
Aye.
Osborne?
Coleman?
Aye.
Rivera?
Aye.
Waterman? Lavaro?
Just congratulations to all the reappointments of the judges. I vote aye.
10M through W. Councilperson Ram Chao?
Aye.
Bajano?
Aye.
Yun?
I vote aye, but 10U that insurance coverage, insurance consulting service, so overview committee, I know, as a city council member, I like the interest to get in, you know. So please, Council President, I'm very interested to, you know, pen you that overview committee for the consulting company, okay? And I vote aye.
Councilperson Osborne?
Aye.
Coleman?
Aye.
Rivera?
Aye.
Waterman? Lavaro?
I should have said just on 10L, I'm sorry, I'm just going back a little bit. Thanks to Councilman Gudjuski and Brian Platt.
We can't hear you, Councilman. You got to-
My apologies. Congrat, thank you to Councilman Gudjuski, Brian Platt, and South Greenville Neighborhood Association for bringing this study for rehabilitation, so, great work.
I thank you very much. I stepped out of the room, but L is very important for
Yeah.
for South Greenville and for Ward A, so thank you, and my vote is aye for-
I vote aye.
Okay. Council President, you vote aye?
Yes, aye.
On M through W, Councilman Gudjuski, and then I'm going to catch you up. On the medical claims, Claims and Addendum Number One?
Aye.
We have a 9-0 vote for those approved, excepting the one which was withdrawn by the Business Administrator. You missed A through L. Your vote on L?
Aye, definitely aye.
Then it's a 9-0 for A through L. You are caught up. We are now through X through Z6. Councilperson Gudjuski?
Aye.
Ram Chao?
Ayes.
Bajano? Councilman Bajano?
Aye.
Yun?
I vote aye, but 10Z4, Judges, is school crossing safety improvement to the, but they're missing the lot of the public square in the Jersey Heights, PSA, PS27.
To the administration.
Okay, so I need, why they're missing that?
This is a 2013 project. You can make your request known, and this can go into the 2015 project. If you look, if you look and see, this was all planned, this is the 2013, page four.
Then BA, make sure 2015, we should be involved in the Heights area.
Okay.
I can hear you.
Your vote is in the affirmative, Councilman Yun?
Okay, I vote aye.
Councilperson Osborne?
I vote aye.
Coleman?
Aye.
Rivera?
Aye.
Waterman? Lavaro?
Which ones are we doing?
X through Z6.
I don't remember which number it is. The one on Liberty Humane Society, any other folks left? Stacy, Paul. It's great that we got this done, but more importantly, I think, just great to have a great relationship working with Liberty Humane Society. Thank you both, and to the folks of Liberty Humane. I vote aye.
And don't excuse the typos. Liberty Humane, not Liberty Human Society. We'll get that fixed. X through Z6, we've done Z7 through Z15. Councilperson Gudjuski?
Aye.
Ram Chao?
Aye.
Bajano?
Aye.
Yun?
I vote aye, but also G15, BA. Well, Manhattan Avenue Stripscape Improv Project, I'd like more detailed information, please. Thank you.
Councilperson Osborne?
Aye.
Coleman?
Aye.
Rivera?
Aye.
Waterman? Lavaro?
I vote aye, except on Z13, which I abstain on.
D13, you abstain.
I abstain on Z13.
Okay, so we have a 9-0. D13 is an 8-0-1 abstaining. Council President Lavaro. Z16 through 22, Councilperson Gudjuski?
Aye.
Ram Chao?
Aye.
Bajano? Yun?
I vote aye, but Z17, which department would move into that building?
All of the civilians that are in One Journal Square.
Okay, but what department?
That is Information Technology, Payroll, Pension, Treasury-
I slowed down.
And Accounting Control.
Pension and what else?
There's five divisions. Account, Control.
Okay, thank you. But how many total people were expected? How many city employees moved? 60?
Approximately, right?
More traffic on Central Avenue. You don't have to abstain, Councilman Yun.
Yeah, but they have, behind the parking lot, there were still spaces available, you know? Behind the parking, the municipal lot? Yes.
Okay. Your vote, Councilman Yun?
I vote aye, yep.
Councilperson Osborne?
Aye.
Coleman?
Aye.
Rivera?
Aye.
Waterman?
Aye.
President?
Aye.
We have a 9-0 vote for 16 through 22. 23 through 32, Councilperson Gudjuski?
Aye.
Ram Chao?
Aye.
Bajano?
Aye.
Yun?
Aye.
Osborne?
Aye.
Coleman?
Aye.
Rivera?
Aye.
Waterman?
Aye.
Lavaro?
Aye.
9-0 on Z23 through 32. We did 37 earlier. Started off with our Boy Scouts, Eagle Scouts. So it's the Balance of Business, Z33 through Z39, except Z37 done earlier. Councilperson Gudjuski?
Aye.
Ram Chao?
Aye.
Bajano?
Aye.
Yun?
Aye.
Osborne?
Aye.
Coleman?
Aye.
Rivera?
Aye.
Waterman?
Aye.
Lavaro?
Z35, congratulations to St. Peter's Prep, State Charities, number one in the state. And Councilman Rivera has arranged to have them here at the next meeting in January to present the resolutions. It's going to be a fun time there. And then lastly, on 10Z39, our hearts and prayers go out to the Pakistani community here in Jersey City and all the people there in that tragedy in Pakistan. I vote aye on all.
All right, we have a 9-0 vote for all. Do we have a motion to adjourn at 9:31? Motion by Councilperson Coleman? Second goodbye. Councilperson Osborne? Wait, 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 wait. Happy holidays! Happy holidays! We are adjourned by acclamation.
Next meeting, January 5th.